County Council meeting is now in session. The Honorable Bruce Henderson will give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Everyone that will, please bow your heads. Father God, help us to use our godly given and driven universal conscience tonight. Help us to walk the pain to arrive at a level of gain, and not only individually, but for those that rely on us, as we consider the tremendous responsibility of being called representative. Help us to relate that to what Christ did for us as our representative to the Father, so we can be found and certified as good and faithful servants. Help us to crucify all self tonight. Take away the ambition, our own ambitions, help us to take it away as we move forward while believing our people will reward what we do for the sake of good. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office. As I call your name, if you'd come forward for Mr. Kendry to swear you in. First person is Amy Massey. Next person's Vance Stein. Next is Jim Bradford. Next, Mark Howey. Then Odell Bailey. Janet Steele. Steve Fields. And Ashley Britton.
The county is indebted to its citizen volunteers to serve on its boards and commissions, so it is a privilege and honor to minister the oath to you all. Kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States of America. Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You do not have to sign anything. We'll figure it out. Thanks. Appreciate it. Jim? Thank you, ma'am. Thanks a lot. Let's see. Our next order of business is we want to recognize a faithful employee to the county. Gary Bass, are you here?
Gary, it's an honor to present this to you, sir, from working with the county from August 1990 to April 2016. So we appreciate everything you've done for the county. If you want to say a few words, feel free to.
I'm not much on public speaking, but it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. And I look forward to this. And I will pray for you guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Now it's time for the year-end report from Keep York County Beautiful.
Good evening. My name is April Hershey. I'm currently the board chair for Keep York County Beautiful. Tonight represents our sixth anniversary since the board has been established, and so we have a couple of statistics to share with you and the county members. This is a listing of our current board members, and we would like to welcome our newest members, Stephanie Hallman and Barb Omer. And we thank our outgoing members this evening, Debbie Keagans, Deanna Brooks, and Mike Moran. Keep York County Beautiful is a board that is involved with volunteer service to do just that, keep York County beautiful. We volunteer during board meetings, e-meetings, special projects, and community events. To date, our total volunteer hours are over 505, which is over $11,000 in value to the county. Keep York County Beautiful has also been the recipient of a number of grants, both state and national awards, and to date, over $89,000 in grant funding is what we have received. A great way to find out what is going on with Keep York County Beautiful is to follow us on social media. It is a very active group. We post lots of pictures of all the different things that we're doing, as well as upcoming events, both Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook feeds. Some question us as to why do we care about York County and keeping it beautiful. We have a couple of core values. One, because we value where we live. The second is the natural environment. These are actually pictures from York County itself. These are not stock photos from the internet. Also because of our historic sites in York County. And we do it for them, meaning the kids of York County. They are who are going to inherit this area. Of our three cornerstones, Keep York County Beautiful's mission involves waste reduction and recycling. And we participate in events such as Earth Day Birthday, which we actually just had this past Saturday at the York County Museum. We also were involved in a York County compost bin sale that went online before the Earth Day Birthday event, so we had people pick up compost bins that they had reserved, as well as sold them on site. Our second cornerstone is also to prevent litter and educate the public on the detrimental effects of litter, such as it is ugly, dangerous, unhealthy, and expensive. And litter is actually everyone's problem. Keep York County Beautiful helps support York County collection and recycling litter collection programs, such as the Litter Challenge, which is an activity where you can clean anywhere you like up to 10 times this year for 20 minutes. Turn in the time that you've volunteered, and we add that to our volunteer hours. We also have the Adopt a Road program. This is a one or two mile adoption. Some of you may be familiar with the Adopt a Highway adoption, but this is a county road. We also do the Great American Cleanup. This is through Keep America Beautiful. This is free cleanup supplies for anyone, any group, that gets involved in cleaning up an area in and around where they live. There's also a new idea that we have this year called Adopt Your Spot. This is for businesses in York County specifically. This would be making businesses responsible for the spot in which their business inhabits. And again, this would be us providing supplies to the business itself to help clean up their area. Our third cornerstone is beautification. Keep York County Beautiful board members and other volunteers assist with the mini-grants program, Gateway Gardens, community gardens, school gardens, and more. This photo actually shows children of Hickory Grove and Sharon Elementary weeding their vegetable garden. When harvested, salads were made from the vegetables here, and this was actually the first time some of the kids had ever eaten a salad. Here are some photos from the Museum of York County Master Gardeners 2015 project, and this was a project that was encouraging pollinators, such as the butterflies and bees. We just awarded our 2016 mini-grant recipients. Actually, they got the email on Friday afternoon, and we've already been recognized by Bellevue Elementary in their latest newsletter. So this is our third year offering Keep York County Beautiful mini-grants to organizations, schools, governments, groups, and businesses in York County. We will continue to offer these mini-grants as long as we receive grant funding. And just a quick glance at the recipients, each received between $250 and $500, depending on their grant request. Some of our other outreach programs include America Recycles Day, and School and Public Days, Household Hazardous Materials Collection Events, Cargo Net Distribution, to secure loads in the backs of trucks from flying out, and Recycling Bin Distribution. For those of you who like statistics, in my full-time job, this is a lot of what I do, so I like the numbers. This is actually the York County Litter Index that we participate in every year. This is a requirement for us to maintain our membership with Keep America, as a Keep America Beautiful community. And these numbers are kind of telling in a couple of different ways. As you can see, the first five numbers, if you're reading from the top to the bottom, those are the first five years that we participated in Litter Index. Each of those squares represents the same stretch of roadway that we looked at year after year. And we do that same set of roads every five years. We're currently getting ready to do our third year of the second set of roads, which is why 14 and 15 at the very bottom have the kind of line drawn above them. There are a number of different reasons why these numbers fluctuate the way that they do. It could be anything from has the grass been mowed prior to us going to view the stretch of roadway? Was it mowed the year before versus when we went out to see it the following year? Also, it has to do with if that stretch of road has been adopted by a group for regular And lastly, the reason why we do all of this is because we actually love where we live, and we ask that everyone else does too. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry that Mr. Roddy's not here. He's made a big thing about litter lately, so.
Yes.
Hey, he missed it. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next person is Elizabeth Melton regarding animal shelter issues.
I'm Elizabeth Melton. My dog Cody, he was killed. Or, Mr. Winkler, I'm sorry, but I believe he was murdered. Yes, he attacked me, but he had a reason. He wasn't an aggressive dog. I had a Tawawa. He bit her all the time, and he never touched her. I believe he had a tumor. He was not quarantined. I called. He was taken from my home on a Friday night. He was murdered. This is the way I look at it, murdered Monday. I called them Monday morning. I was supposed to call. They told my daughter, my son, and his girlfriend to call because he was microchipped. When I called there, as soon as they opened, I tried from 6:00 until a little after 9:00. The woman there who answered the phone said, "Well, he's gone," and she was hateful. Something needs to be done. These animals do not need to die. They said he was aggressive. If he was aggressive, then by God, they treated him meanly. And last year, I got a percentage of cats that were killed there. Last year, 60% of cats were killed there, and they were accused of being aggressive. I want justice for Cody, and I want justice for all the other animals. I'm hurt. I can't sleep. I can't eat. I'm under a doctor's care because of everything that's gone on with Cody. And they had a record of his rabies shot. They still cut his head off and sent it in to be tested when they knew that he had his shots, because my vet had sent them records over to them. I have a gripe against them. I think somebody should go in and investigate what goes on in that shelter, because these animals are dying. Maybe some do deserve to die, but not that way. I want justice. And I don't mean to sound like I'm hateful. I'm just hurt. I can't get over this, and I'm going to live with these scars for the rest of my life, physically and emotionally. I just want justice for all animals. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next person is J.J. Mattingly to discuss, he's with the York County Veterans Advisory Council, to discuss the Veterans Memorial.
Thank you all for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our veterans. My name is J.J. Mattingly, and I represent the York County Veterans Advisory Council. We have quite a few of our finest veterans in attendance. If you guys would please stand. Thank you all for coming. Every year, the York County Veterans Advisory Council helps coordinate all the various veteran groups in the county to hold wonderful events for both Memorial Day and Veterans Day. For over 30 years, with the help of private landowners, we have held a ceremony to honor our fallen heroes at the York County Veterans Memorial located at Lakeview Memory Gardens on Highway 321 outside of York. And for over 10 years, we have held a Veterans Day Parade through York, followed by a ceremony at Whiteside's Parking Lot. Now, both of these locations are private property. Recently, Lakeview Memory Gardens has changed from local to corporate ownership, and Whiteside's parking lot and building is up for sale. While we have secured verbal permission to use these places again this year, their long-term availability is uncertain. Having to cancel these events would be a shame. A lot of work is involved, and a lot of love. We have also had issues with some family members not wanting anyone standing or sitting on their loved one's grave sites, which limits our seating area at the cemetery. We respectfully request all possible assistance from York County in the establishment of a permanent York County Veterans Memorial Park, to be located downtown in the county seat of York, so that we can have our own location for our events, as well as relocate and display our York County Veterans Monument and our Military Order of Purple Heart Monument. We have selected an ideal site available at the corner of East Liberty Street and Garner Street in York, near the library. We estimate we will need at least $120,000 to purchase the land from Norfolk Southern Railroad and relocate both monuments, as well as build a simple stage platform and flag area. This location is large enough and open enough for our purposes, and could be used for many other events as well, for which there's already been much interest expressed. The city of York is in favor and can provide maintenance and security, but cannot offer much funding. We will be meeting with the York City Council tomorrow. When I observed to our group that there is currently no permanent tribute to our veterans in the county seat, I was reminded that there is indeed a beautiful veterans monument, but it only honors Confederate veterans. Now would be a good time to make things right. 150 years is long enough. We will be applying for funds from the hospitality tax in June, but that application requires firm numbers from any other sources like York County before any grant from them. We have also requested funds from the state of South Carolina, but we have not received any answer as of yet. We haven't heard from Mark Zuckerberg, Bill Gates, Jeff Bezos, T. Boone Pickens, Hillary Clinton, or Donald Trump yet either. We need the help of this council. We have received hundreds of signatures on our petition for this park, and you are all invited to read and sign the petition here or online at www.changed.org. And this thing is as long as my arm, so if I were you, I'd sign the petition that we have here tonight. There you have it, the who, what, when, where, and why. We veterans are determined to make this happen, and we are asking for your support. We hope and pray that this will be a wonderful opportunity for us all to put politics aside in this election year and come together, united behind a common cause, and enjoy the warm, fuzzy feeling of knowing we're the strongest country on earth, thanks to the sacrifices made by the men and women of our armed forces. By the way, you're all cordially invited to this year's Memorial Day service, May 29th at 4:00 PM at Lakeview Memory Gardens. Thank you, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you, sir. So this petition, let me just ask you about the petition you handed out. That was, you obviously have a lot more signatures. This was just when you were starting in here?
Yes, we do. There's 125 so far on change.org, and we have several petitions that are still out in the churches, but I have a bunch of them that are signed here, if you want to take a look at those.
Well, if you don't have a copy to give us, that's fine. I believe what you're saying.
This is actually an original, but...
No, that's okay.
Okay.
But thank you, sir. Bill, can you kind of look into this?
This bill will be going away, won't be able to do it right now.
That's a good thought. Can you kind of look into it some, basically?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's Benny Copeland with the York Conservation District for a brief update on conservation efforts.
Honorable Chairman, honorable council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come and give you a brief update on conservation efforts in York County. The latest farm bill, they approved $1.2 billion to be spent on soil health, water quality, wildlife incentive, and related resources in both public and private lands. In York County, over the past 10 years, we've brought into this county over $2 million of money spent on the ground for conservation efforts, landowners, and private, public and private property. Last year, in this county, we impacted over 6,000 acres and brought in a little over $200,000. This year, so far, we've impacted 5,000 acres, and we've brought in over $215,000. That's money spent on the ground in York County, not inflated dollars. That's dollar-for-dollar. We have a heck of an outreach program, and what I just passed out to you is a little information on our outreach. Last year, we impacted 4,200 students through Barbara's efforts, who was our district coordinator. The young lady spoke first, was talking about the gardens. That's one thing that Barbara's been instrumental in starting and getting their help and having help from other agencies. We've had 14 classrooms that have had outdoor gardens that actually produced food, that they had a salad out of for one of their meals. And some of them, like she said, some of them have never had, some of them don't even know where stuff comes from. The milk comes out of a jug. It doesn't come from a cow. So that's the kind of impact that we're having on students. So you can read this. I'm not going to read it to you, but one thing on the bottom, there's a little photo of Ms. Evelyn Edmunds. Ms. Evelyn Edmunds was a district conservationist for over 20 years. She's a conservation commissioner, married us now. And through her efforts in conservation and farming and the community, not only just in farming, but in her overall impact in the community, she was awarded the Order of the Palmetto this year. And that was, I don't know if most of you know about the Order of the Palmetto. It's a pretty prestigious award. This year, we're going to have, let me get the right page out here, on the spring newsletter that you just got, I want you to take a look at the Project Learning Tree. That's one of the best programs that we've got. That was started in 1980, well, '73, and it is one of the highest recommended programs for teachers to study environmental issues. It's impacted over 20,000 South Carolina teachers, and we provide a workshop for this each year for teachers, and they get six hours recertification credit for that. So that's pretty good. That's one of the impacts that we do. And if you can look through here, we have our district coordinator this year, Barbara O'Connell, received Outstanding Conservationist Award for the state conservation districts. So we're real proud of that. Our funding, now, I didn't come here to ask for money, but I do want to talk about our funding, just a little bit. Our funding comes from state, and the state sends us some. Y'all have supported us in our funding each year. And we get some funding from administrating grants that come through our office. We get some funding from administering the Fish and Creek Watershed business for them, and we get funding from our affiliate members. We do all of this, everything that you see here, on a budget of just under $50,000 a year. And only about half of that comes from the state and county. So I want you to support our budget. We don't ask for a lot. We don't come in here asking for $10,000 or $100,000 hoping to get 10. We put down what we need to satisfy our budget request, and I'd appreciate it if y'all would take a close look at that this year. And y'all have any questions about what we're doing?
Thank you, Benny. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank y'all very much for your support and your help, and y'all have a good evening.
Okay. Our next part is the public forum session. Just a reminder now, in order to be fair with all these names, I have to allow two minutes, so after two minutes, I'm going to kind of shut you off. I'm just doing that to be fair, not to be rude. If you keep going, you cut off somebody else. And please, no clapping, because once that happens, I got to stop and pause, and then somebody else doesn't get to speak. So be respectful of all the people behind you that want to speak. First person is Mary Williams. And when you come forward, give your name, and, well, you know how to do it. You've done it enough.
I know the routine.
You know the routine.
And I didn't realize I was first up. I was number two last time I checked, but that's okay.
Yeah, they had signed up, the appearance people.
Okay.
They thought they had to sign up here.
So my name is Mary Williams. I am a resident of Lake Wiley's. I am on the Board of Directors for HOA, and I am with the Lake Wiley Civic Association. I am here tonight to talk to you about safety, traffic, environment, and quality of life in Lake Wiley. I'd also like to say, Mr. Henderson, that the four young folks that you saw in your finance meeting, they're actually from Clover High School, and they're here doing a special project for the class. So now they know who their representative is firsthand. So you know what I'm here. I'm here to ask about hitting the pause button, moratorium, overlay, watershed, whatever it is, whatever we can do to stop growth just for a bit, residential growth just for a bit, while the council and/or until we can incorporate, which, you know, there's a group of us that are trying to get that done. It's not going to happen overnight. I'm betting it'll take a year or so before we can get there. So we need something in the stopgap from now, and I beg you to please take action. Please take some kind of action. I know you all are tired of saying, "I've heard, we've been talking about this for years. There was a plan from two years. There's a plan from December. Mr. Henderson has a plan." So I please just ask that you take some kind of action, just put the pause button. We've got that one major intersection that all the residents go through at one time or another during the week or during the day at 274 and 49. And it's an F, and you guys know that already, too. So please, I ask you for your help. The other thing I want to say is that I was actually offended by some of the comments that Mr. Roddy said in the last council meeting regarding Lake Wiley residents. And Mr. Black, will you ask us to be respectful? And I think that that goes both ways. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next person is Billy Hagner.
Billy Hagner, 1901 Voyager Road, York. I'm here tonight in support of the Lake Wiley Land Use Development Overlay, and encouraging you tonight to support it for a second reading and for a public hearing. This issue has been extensively discussed for several years now, and it's now's time to do something. On October 20th, 2014, there was a third reading for a similar type of overlay. It was delayed for further discussion, and I never have seen where it's resurfaced. Y'all may know where it has. On September 21st, 2015, David McCorkle and I presented a Lake Wiley Critical Watershed proposal, which I thought was positively received. The planning department said they could probably come back with a proposal within a year. It's getting close to that time now, just three or four months off. In December 2015, changes were made to the zoning ordinance to add gross density caps. Also, the other thing it did, it took out high-density housing, such as apartments and townhomes, out of everything but RD2 and BD3. If you look at the zoning, the majority of the land on the west side of Lake Wiley is RD2. So that tells me where all the high-density property is going to go on the west side of the lake. And you can have apartments, you can have up to 15 residents per acre of apartments. However, the planning department does say that most of this area is already under construction or it's already planted. So that's not really encouraging for me. I think we need to do something. Some on the county council think incorporation is... Some on the county council think incorporation is the answer. However, in my opinion, this will only take care of a small area. There's lots more area, all the way down to almost a mountain gallant road, it needs to be under this overlay. So, now's the time to do something. We need to start leading on this before it's too late, if it's not already. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Next person is Margaret Spratt Blackwell.
That's right, Margaret Spratt Blackwell. Thank you, Margaret Blackwell. I live at 6391 Baker Lane in Lake Wiley. And here I am once again, asking that you pass the proposed Lake Wiley overlay. Please protect this county's most valuable resource, Lake Wiley. I've read that some on council are tired of Lake Wiley folks coming before them, it's just the same folks. Yes, some of us are the same. But many people feel it's useless to come before you because nothing happens. I represent many people from all over the county, not just those from Lake Wiley. Here are petitions that have 25 names per page, that are from Lake Wiley, Fort Mill, York, Tegukah, they're from all over the county. These are also petitions that came from all over the county. They're signed in all of the different towns in the county, as well as Lake Wiley. I receive emails from people that I don't even know all the time. I think I have time to read you excerpts from a few of these. "You need to see what happened yesterday during the heavy rain. Pretty soon, we won't even have a lake. It's filling in quickly. Examples like Crowder's Creek and Little Allison Creek sandbars. Have y'all seen those? They're awful, ones about a half mile long. Orange mud sediment from Palm Tree Cove II Development and Construction Sites are continuing to pollute Lake Wiley. This has been going on for months." Here's one, "You know, millions of cubic yards of silt have filled in over a half mile of Crowder's Creek, causing millions of dollars lost in property values. We've been to South Carolina DHEC, we've been to York County DHEC, continues to be a problem with never a solution. Tullamore and Essex Homes continues to contaminate Lake Wiley." Excuse me, yeah, Lake Wiley. They've even opened a storm drain, letting mud go directly into Crowder's Creek. That area is still polluting the lake. Here's one, "Again, blue in the face. This project by D.R. Horton has been out of compliance for years and no solutions, but lots of excuses by the county, and it continues to fill in Crowder's Creek. It's not going to do any good to report and complain, as we have been complaining for 15 years to the county. It's time to file a lawsuit." Some of these are from people I don't even know, some of them are from people I've known for years. But we need to do what is necessary to protect the lake. We support your pennies for progress, we support your bond referendum, and you gladly take and spend our tax dollars. Please, it's time to have the courage to support us and protect our lake. I hope you seize the opportunity tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next person is John Lockwood.
Good afternoon. My name's John Lockwood. I live at 2137 Brant Road, York, South Carolina. I have been a resident of York County for 31 years, 18 of which have been on Lake Wiley. I am president of the Allison Creek Homeowners Association, so I represent quite a few people in Bruce's territory. I also am a volunteer with the Catawba River Keeper. I am a cove keeper, and I monitor the health of the Catawba River and Lake Wiley. And I do this by kayak, so I have the opportunity to get up close and personal to all the damage that is being done to the lake and to the river. So, I am here to endorse Bruce's proposal for an overlay, and I certainly hope that you will give it serious consideration and get this thing passed. The asset that Lake Wiley and the Catawba River gives to York County is tremendous, and it's an asset that is appreciated all over the state. So, I encourage everyone to take advantage of the lake, and I also encourage them to protect the lake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Next person is Doug Meyer Kuno.
Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again, once again. Thank you for your time and effort that you commit to the community, it's greatly appreciated. We have Council Henderson's proposal for overlay. I like the idea. We also have a proposal from Councilman Johnson on a moratorium, and I like that idea. I live on Lake Wiley, I live on Bonham Road, specifically Mills Creek. Over the last few years, I personally have witnessed the basin of the Mills Creek area change. I have less footage of water on my dock than I did a couple of years ago, four years ago. I have a friend specifically, from nine years ago to today, he cannot use his dock, simply because erosion and silt. And I just don't see that's an economic, sustainable way to run our county, and specifically take care of the jewel of Lake Wiley or York County, which is our lake. I have enough experience, I have enough vision and understanding of this council, that I don't believe both of these proposals are gonna pass, maybe neither one, I'm not sure. But I do know this, if you take Councilman Henderson's proposal, which I don't believe is as strong as the overlay that was submitted two years ago, not to mention four years ago, and combine it with Councilman Johnson's proposal, and somehow use a proposed overlay and incorporate it with a zoning freeze, I think we might have something. I'm sorry. I think we also have to take into consideration the traffic impact analysis, and use that as a key performance indicator on how we change the zoning regulations, and we move forward with zoning and changing areas from R1 to R2. This simply isn't sustainable, folks. Please, give this deep consideration. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next person is Chris Christopher.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Christopher. I live at 2064 Tiger Paw Lane. And it was interesting listening to all of the people that you were recognizing earlier, because I'm a volunteer. I volunteer on the Green and Clean Committee, picking up not only on Allison Creek, but also in the city of Rock Hill. I also love the area or the line where it says, "Love where you live," because having lived in Rock Hill, Meadow Lakes, too, for many years, I came over to Lake Wiley and just fell in love with the whole area. And it's interesting, because in the development, I think that it's very important that you think, not only strategically, because I'm a pro-developer, however, when I take a look at what's been going on in the past, and this was on February 22nd, just on, at the end of my cove, and I went out there and I said, "I can't believe all of the red mud that has leaked into the lake and all of the silt and everything." And in fact, I'm looking down, and you may not be able to see this clearly, but that whole outer bank, I'm looking from my yard out there, all the way to the end of that cove, is red mud and silt and everything coming from Palm Tree Cove II. And the other ones are just to show you the overflow, the red mud, I just went out there and it just rained, and I'm just showing, just taking snapshots. And I had over 40 pictures of all of this, that I'm just, I wanted to bring to you, because I love where I live, and what I'd like you to do is seriously consider Councilman Henderson's overlay, because I think that right now, we just need a pause. We need to take a look at this and be responsible in what we do. So, I want to thank you for your attention, and I want to thank you for your vote tonight on this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's Jim Martin.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, I've been living on Lake Wiley since 1972, and I enjoyed it because it wasn't so crowded. But right now, the construction going on there is a disaster, it's growing too fast. The roads can't handle it, the people can't handle it, and the river can't handle it. In between my house and my neighbor's house, we had a wonderful little cove there, that the rainwater would wash into the river without any problem. And now the rainwater stopped, all the silt and stuff, it has washed up and made a dam and stopped the water from flowing. So, we have to call Crescent, tell them to come out and spray it for mosquitoes, because they grow very fast. And the boats out there have become an enormous challenge, because I have a five-foot wall in front of my yard to keep it from washing. I had to put ripper out in front of that concrete block wall, because the boats had just beat it to death. And now I'm gonna have to spend money again to repair it and keep it from, my whole front yard from washing away. And my pier is demolished, my float just beat to death because of so many boats. On Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we would have between 200 and 300 pontoon boats, speed boats, all kind of boats out there, you won't believe them, houseboats, and what they do is create so much wake, it's destroying all the beachland along the waterfront. We'd appreciate if you'd consider the density of this property, and not let it grow so fast and get so full of people, we can't handle it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, Jim. Last person is Elaine Goff.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Goff, and I live at 981 Bonham Road in Lake Wiley. I'm here tonight to urge you to approve the Lake Wiley overlay that Councilman Henderson is proposing. The director of York County, Keep York County Beautiful, spoke very eloquently about loving where you live, and I think it's very apparent by all the speakers tonight that we truly do. We've been working on this type of proposal for years, it probably predates many of y'all's service to this body, and I agree with the speakers that have come before me tonight to ask you to protect this most valuable asset, both its environmental and its economic asset to the county and to this region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We'll move into public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider a third reading of an ordinance entitled to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015, to reduce tax revenues levied for the general fund due to updated value of a mill, and to include offsetting reductions in fuel and workers' compensation expenditures, to provide for an appropriation of unassigned general fund balance, water and sewer fund balance, and solid waste collection fund balance, for the transfer to the other post-employment benefits trust established by the South Carolina Association of Counties, in order to fund the unfunded liability, as reported in the audit, for a year ending June 30th, 2015, to provide additional grant revenues from the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources for purposes of constructing a boat ramp on the Broad River, to appropriate remaining Santee Cooper loan proceeds for purposes of repayment of Santee Cooper loan, to establish new fund for capital projects funded by 2016 bond proceeds and general fund transfer, and to provide for other fiscal matters related to the county government. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody here want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Got a motion to close? Do we have a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, old business, consider third reading, case number 1537, rezoned from BD2 to BD3 at 1940 Highway 160 in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1538, rezoned property from RD2 to light industrial to, and light industrial to BD3 at 302 Hampton Trail Drive, 1060 Isom Road, 1051 RPC Road, 1740-1760 Pleasant Road, and the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve, include the conditions proposed by the TIE.
Second.
And Michael, that doesn't have to be read in, the conditions, does it?
Conditions as presented would be fine.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1604, rezoned from RD1 to BD1 at 2683 and 2719 Pleasant Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, an incentive agreement to provide for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentive, and infrastructure credits to a company known to the county as Project Sunnyside, the inclusion of certain property in New York County, and a multi-county industrial park, and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, new business. We had a request to defer the proclamation, because the family members couldn't be here, so we'll defer number one. Next item, consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee on April 18th, 2016. Chairman Johnson?
Move to approve. Daniel Holmes for the Rock Hill York County CVB, Leon Yard for the Oakdale Fire Tax District Board, Dwight Muffett for the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, Mark Van Sickle for the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, Melody Kirst for Keep York County Beautiful, Steve Crump for Building Board of Appeals, Curtis Siek for Building Board of Appeals, and Jason White so for Building Board of Appeals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If there's no nominations from the floor, do we have any discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, Chapter 30, Section 10, to require members of boards and commission to annually disclose employer, spouses, employer, affiliated companies, and membership on public boards, to define conflict of interest, to provide for disqualification of members who fail to fulfill contractual obligations to York County, to provide for removal by county council for failure to comply, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider first reading of an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams?
I think most, and there's gonna be a lot of questions, but the one that I had was York County forever, there's been some talk about funding it before, and then here, this is saying that we can't fund it at a full mill, that probably won't prohibit us from funding at a lesser rate, which was one of the proposals at the workshop anyway, so just as we go through this, I'd like to see the options for what we could do, and if there's any interest in funding it again.
Any other comments? Ms. Cox?
To the extent that we don't already have this, if we could get this posted on the website, so that the public can take a look at this document, I'd like to make sure that happens. I've had requests.
Any other comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson?
In the budget binder that we received, we normally, or at least over the past two years, we've received a projection, not only for this year, but for the following two years, based on revenue and expenditures. I'm not sure I saw it this time when I went through it this past weekend, if it's there. If it's not there, please put it there, and if it is there, somebody send me an email and tell me what page it's on, because I couldn't find it.
It's in the presentation, sir.
That will start tomorrow night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night?
It is, but I will make sure.
Can you make a copy to give to all the council?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I would like to copy that copy of the presentation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, or Mr. Winkler?
I'll just second Councilman Williams' comments that...
I'll just second Councilor Williams' comments that I thought we were gonna look at options, so I'd like to see options for funding York County Forever, whether it's fully or whatever we can do, I'd like to, because I thought that was something, we came out that we were at least gonna look at the options for it, so.
Any further discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider allowing a short-term moratorium on all hospitality tax capital project grant applications. I guess this is to make official what they already have to do anyway. So they just wanna get the council's approval to do what, you know, make it official, I guess.
Yeah, well, they, and I think you're right, it's gonna happen anyway. The only thing about not taking them is, if we continue to take them, the people will know what's out there. I'm not sure the last two we got, we were officially taking them, when did we got them in the first place? So.
I think they're learning their lesson, and I think they've realized that with everything going on, they wanna, you know, when we had the workshop to get that new committee to come up with the proposals, and they just don't wanna give false hope to groups right now until they get everything ducks in a row. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Johnson? I'm concerned that, I think it's the role of this council to decide whether or not a project should be funded. It is the role of this group to determine whether or not you've met all the criteria, and not, and not whether or not funds should be there. We have a, we have a tax that's raising approximately $2 million a year. I don't know how long you need to wait before you say, hey, I'm willing to give maybe $100,000 to this capital project, or $250,000 to this capital project, as opposed, how many millions? We waited, I guess, till we had about $6 million last time, then we spent it all, and we did spend it all, there's no question, but we continue to collect a million dollars a year. I'd like to see them continue to screen these, and I'd like them to see them still come before the council. And if the council looks at it and says, that's not something we're willing to spend the million that we have on this year, then that's what, that's what we get, that's what we get paid to do. That's our job up here. And I'd hate, I'd hate to see us just say, nope, we're not gonna look at this, and come back to us when we have another four or five million to spend. And I'm afraid that's what we're going to do. So I'd like, I'd like, I'd like it to continue the way it is. We don't, we spend money up here. We don't have to approve the spending of money if we don't want to. We certainly shouldn't stop this group from looking at grant applications. And that's all their, that's their entire role, is to look at grant applications, so. That's my, well, let me, while I.
Everybody's gonna have comments.
Yeah, it sounds like everybody's gonna get in on this, so Chad's already, well, I'm gonna go through and then I'll come back. So Bruce, I'll just go down the line. Yes?
Well, I kinda agree with Councilman Johnson here because the whole purpose of the tourism tax dollars is to, to help create a conditions, to help continue generating the tax revenue. It needs to be perpetual, ongoing, and so on. So, and, you know, for the longest, it did sit there. It sat there and, you know, nothing was done with it, and, and it's not the government's place to just sit here and just hoard up money, but neither is the government's place to overspend and take you into negative figures either. So, but this is a special-type tax that is regulated even from the state level as to what all we can do with it. And as far as I'm concerned, if we don't keep moving things along, after a while, you can actually put yourself in a little danger of forfeiting your money. So I don't want to get into a situation where that could come up. And by all means, the state don't deserve our money from this county, whether we like the tax or not. The state don't deserve to get any of this money. So, you know, I just don't want to get into a situation where we're just postponing and postponing, and just like this gentleman was talking about this Veterans Memorial, I know we're talking about a little while, you know, but, but things like that, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, I, I don't know exactly how that would fit in at this point, but I would love to see something like that be helpful in that, that particular situation, or some way or another that we could help in that situation. That's my personal feeling. But, but I do, I do believe that we should at least examine the H-Tax potential grants and just keep it moving forward. I mean, again, folks, I'm for sure, what, can either one of you, well, Beth's not in here, is she?
She's retired.
Okay, that's right, she's retired. Just retired. Can anyone tell me the fund balance at this point? Anybody?
Much, I think it was 380 or something like that. It was, it was down to whether it can't really be practical. I guess they're getting another million and, whenever it is.
Should be roll, well, here's, before, that's okay. Before long, it'll, it'll be a big chunk in there, real quick. So, so if we, if we could please just, just keep moving forward with the recommendations, we don't have to jump on this stuff. I mean, we can slowly, slowly, methodically do what we're supposed to do.
Ms. Cox? Mr. Rush? No, we're just discussing right now. We might not require a motion. Mr. Rush?
Well, I don't have a problem with that board continuing to take the application. Like Councilman Johnson said, it's our job to approve them to spend the money, you know, and it may be a good project that's coming through or waiting to come through, and if we're not accepting the application, we may miss out on the opportunity to fund a good project that will be good for the area. So ultimately, that decision will come from this board, whether we approve the funding to spend it. They're just approving the applications to come to us or rating them on a percentage for funding. So if it comes to us with their recommendation, thumbs up, the thumbs down, it's still our choice to spend the money. And like, like we've all said and know, that money's gonna continue to come in whether we act on those grant applications or not, so it's not that big a burden for us to see them.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll pretty much just second what it looks like the majority of the council might be saying. You know, we, we've put together kind of a schedule last year for them to not just bring us everyone as it comes before them, but to group them and then bring the ones that are qualified to us at certain times of the year. I know they're working on kind of their direction and that kind of thing, but I think they can still continue to accept applications, in my opinion, while they're doing that, and grade them on the criteria that were set up, and then bring them before us on the time schedule that we talked about last year. And then ultimately, it's our job to make those decisions. But again, I don't wanna see good projects sitting there while we wait on money to build back up again, because how long do we let it build up before we start looking at them again? So let's just keep them coming, and let's do our job and vote on them as they come up.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add is that they're, they're only talking about capital grants, they're still doing marketing grants. Marketing will come through, so the money's there. And I think when they asked us to do this at the workshop, they were envisioning these multimillion-dollar projects, and the fact is, is we don't have the money there. And I think they just want the ability to say, when somebody comes up and says, I wanna do this application for $2 billion, they can say, well, you can, but the money's not there, and, you know, you might be wasting your time. I think they can, can do that, because I, although I agree with Mr. Johnson, there may be some smaller projects that are worthy of funding. If it gets up here and we don't have H-Tax money to pay for it, I'm not gonna support it, and certainly don't want to encourage a bunch of applications for exercise purpose. So that's, now, they, my understanding is they wanna wait until they develop a master plan, not until the fund builds back up. So I, I mean, I think that, that's, you know, once they have a master plan, then we could have applications, and then we'll know, even whether we have the money or not, we can start prioritizing them. So I did wanna make that clear, is that's what they wanna wait for, is while they do this master plan. I think it's definitely a good idea to come up with a plan.
Ms. Cox?
Sir? Do you take comments from the floor?
No, sir. Ms. Cox?
I think, just to echo Councilman Williams' comments, I think the, the time that we spent discussing this over at the fire training center, the question was, it seemed like, and this is, what's interesting to me is that the folks that we have in the audience who are looking to have an hospitality tax application granted are ones that I would be in favor of approving as a small grant. The concern I have and what is not being set up here is that the folks who, there have been projects that have been approved in all of these districts, in Councilman Henderson's district, and Councilman Johnson's district, and the problem is, is that it's like a race to who gets the money, and we don't have a plan. And it should be evenly and fairly distributed throughout the county, that's not happening. So I would be in favor of us taking a break to have a master plan, because I think that's the only way it's gonna be fair. Otherwise, it's hungry, hungry hippo, and who can get it first? And that's not the best policy for our county. So I would be in favor of taking a break so that, you know, that everyone has a fair opportunity to get some of that funding.
And they brought this forth for discussion, and if I heard the discussion, consensus is by majority, they can still look at the applications they receive, so there won't be any action item here since it's maintaining status quo right now. But certainly, they have the power to use their own judgment as a committee, they can still review the applications per the will of this council. But in reality, there is no money, so they can't take any action until that committee comes up with a more concrete plan, which is the use of that committee, the fair to use good judgment by this council, maybe awarding one or two things that should not have been awarded. That being said, it's water under the bridge, we move forward, but they'll have to use their good judgment and still consider grants, requests, whatever, and they can certainly say, nice thing to consider, but we're not gonna give it consideration until we have some money that makes it even worth our time to consider. So they still have the will to kind of do what they want, they just wanted kind of the support of the council, which, you know, I'll just make it clear to them, but, yes, sir?
I have that number that was asked. As of March 31st, 2016, we had $756,726.
When do they get, it'll be, what, an estimated million dollars coming in, and?
Two million.
Two million, 220 is projected.
When, when is that? When are, when are they supposed to get it?
The exact date I.
What, do you know?
Well, they collected.
Throughout the year.
They, I mean, it's H-Tax. It's $2.2 million.
So they slowly have to build it back up. So they're trying to avoid spending it before they get it, I guess. But we'll just let them kind of do what we gotta do. If there's no further discussion, we move forward. Next item, council to consider the solicitor's office request for permission to apply for and to accept, if awarded, a fiscal year 2016, 2017 Victims of Crime Act continuation grant in the amount of $84,820.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
No on that one, too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, you can't vote no.
Yeah, thank you. Just, just a reminder, y'all asked me to make sure that you knew end-in-nates of grants, this grant ends September 30th, 2017.
Okay.
Since the vote carried to approve that, I would like to make sure that we have some mechanism in place to identify when that expires, and so that we're alerted to that when we're looking at the budget, because I'm sure I will not remember this come budget time next year.
Yeah, he has the money again this year, that's why I supported it, but I understand the logic of the two noes, future reference, but I'll deal with the future as it comes about. Next item, this is to kind of provide official recognition of action, action of record for staff, if you wanna use that word, based on our consensus that was done at the workshop on the comprehensive land use plan. Staff wanted to make it more official than consensus at the workshop, so that's why we have this now, so I'll read it. Council to discuss and provide directions to staff regarding prioritization and preparation of ordinances to address growth management issues, including but not limited to modifications to the TIA ordinance, B, development of a capital improvement plan, and C, other regulatory matters. So we can, well, just as a reminder, when we had the workshop, we said we wanted to put, and I don't think there was anybody that disagreed, but we wanted to put full focus and teeth into the TIA, and also per Ms. Cox and me and others, development of a capital improvement plan, which is more focused recently in past years, just on water sewer, and the other regulatory matters comment, I guess, is just open-ended, but. Yes, thank you, Mr. Williams.
The, yeah.
I was gonna start foaming at the mouth or something, I didn't know where to go.
No, and I agree, and what, we came out of the workshop, and I guess one thing I wanna point about the traffic impact analysis, we, before the workshop, we thought that it was much, much bigger, but it seemed like we got some rules that might only require tweaking, and, which is good news, because we need to get on some of this other stuff, especially the capital improvement plan. But one of the, I guess, the biggest messages that I heard as far as growth management tools is that this comprehensive plan is gonna be a big, valuable in, in growth management. So that's what I would like to see, that we implement that as soon as possible. And we discussed possibly putting together a study group to improve some, some of the development standards. That's, the opportunity, I think, to do that is there, but, but the, the growth management tools, I think we need to do first, if that helps with growth, and I would, I'd like to add that to it, too.
I'll just go down the line, Mr. Henderson.
I just want to reiterate the fact that how important this is, and I know we all established that the other night. I know there was a few other things that was added to, and we were enlightened to some information as to where and what we could do, and even have some tools now based on the minor tweaking, and maybe could have done some things anyway to, to prevent certain things from happening. So, folks, the bottom line is, we are gonna have to really get, get a grip on this, this wildfire growth to where it won't be just like, just, just that wildfire. You got, you got to have some good quality and well-managed growth. You can't keep just throw the chicken in the room and see which way the feathers fly. You can't keep doing that. And I just hope that we will get ser, get serious by taking action like what's about to come up. I hope you will really join me in getting serious about these issues, talking about this TIA and so forth. Folks, we, this is a broad umbrella-type situation here. We're talking about safety, we're talking about traffic issues, we're talking about people, maybe lesser, lesser amount of people getting hurt, we're talking about safer roads, safe passages across and turning, and turning in to different places and whatnot, and, and maybe, I don't know exactly how you could do this, but those, people call them suicide lanes. I'd like to see, you know, there's, could be some more safety with those. And I can't express how important we need to just actually start locking down and doing what a lot of other counties do, a lot of other cities, so forth, and not be so afraid every time some attorney says boo. Can't keep doing that. No offense.
I think we're all about being very repetitive as we get through this.
Sounds like it.
I certainly support the TIA, and I supported, and I supported it at the workshop the other night, adding some teeth to that TIA, which would allow the council, give us some bullets that we need on rezonings. But I think that a rezoning is not the, this council can stop rezonings, we can simply say, we're not going to rezone that. We have that power. What we haven't had the power is when something was zoned appropriately, that was zoned residential currently, and they went before the planning commission, and the planning commission simply approved that. What I was encouraged to hear was that this TIA will hold language in which we can say to our own planning commission, if this criteria is not. to our own planning commission, if this criteria is not met, then you must do this, and take away some of the discretion at that level so that we can stop some of these developments. As long as we develop a TIA that does exactly that, I'm going to be a full supporter of it. My understanding, and I just want to confirm, is that we will be looking at a TIA draft with that type of language by mid-June, which would allow us to vote on that in June, again in July, and then, I guess, September, because we don't typically meet in August. Yeah, we do, if I recall. Oh, we're meeting in August? Meeting one time in August. So we could actually pass it out in August. I certainly support that. I also support the CIP, which I understand will be at least for the Fort Mill, Tugakay, and the unincorporated parts of Fort Mill area ready, and all the RFATs kind of boundary area by October for presentation to this council. And certainly, we have to have a solution for the rest of the county. We can't just leave them out because they weren't studied by RFATs. But we need to take this RFAT study and enact something out of it. And I attended the Conference of Land Use Plan meeting the other night, and I am, at the time, I heard comments, I really didn't think a lot about it, but the more I've sat around, this extension of the USB, Urban Services Boundary, has to be taken seriously. When you push that out and you say, well, here is where, you're telling every developer, this is where I want growth. I want you to grow here. I think we have to take a very hard look in some of the areas where it was expanded to say, do we really want growth in those areas? Are we ready for growth there? After 15 years, are we ready for growth in Fort Mill? Are we ready for growth in Lake Wiley? I think it's heavily questionable that we were ready there. I'm not sure how we're going to be ready just by moving a USB boundary to, you know, two miles and saying, and calling it even. I have some questions about that, and I'd certainly like them answered. I do want to say this to my fellow members and the public. Audra said something at that meeting that struck me. She said, there is no silver bullet to this. A CIP is not going to fix this. A TIA is not going to fix this. No one ordinance is going to fix your problems. This is all going to have to be kind of done in conjunction with each other. And that's, and I think that goes to the question of Mr. Henderson's ordinance that he's proposing, my ordinance, which was proposed a few weeks ago. How do we get all of these solutions in place in time to matter? And so that the areas aren't overrun before we can actually get these enacted. I'm excited that this TIA could actually happen by August. That's going to be significant. The CIP in this year, we actually are doing things moving forward. I would like to see us as well, since we're just kind of having a general discussion on growth management, I'd like to see us do something about the watershed. At one point, there had been a discussion about doing a watershed overlay in the western part of the county, kind of that area. I'd like to say...
The whole county.
The whole county, but I want to call it the Broad River Basin, but I don't remember the actual name of it off the top of my head. But that was last fall. And I think what, to me, the most important thing in this is, what we're talking about is, and we've kind of not, but I'm about to, prioritization. We can't say, planning do everything. They don't have the manpower to do everything at one time and hand us the full platter. We have to take this one thing at a time and start knocking these out, one at a time, as opposed to, we need to take a rifle and not a shotgun to this. And we're not killing anything with our, with the way we're kind of spreading all of this out. I believe we need to strengthen the TIA first, because TIA is going to put some restrictions on the planning commission, which is going to give us back some power. Two, I think we need to adopt the, it's very close, well, the CIP is going to happen no matter what. It's moving along on its own way. I'd then like to see us go to this, whatever this water basin overlay is. I'd like to see that adopted. I'd like to see, in this year's budget, the money for that study, because my understanding, that's going to require an extensive study with engineers. I don't see anything in this year's budget for that, when I did the, you know, and of course, I'm only looking at, I haven't had time to go through the whole book, but I'm assuming if it wasn't in the first 13 pages, which summarizes new spending, it's not in there. That's got to be in there. You can't actually, you can't, we just can't pass these things without these studies. We have to jump through these hoops. I'd like to see that funding in there. And of those three things, and of course, passing a comprehensive land use plan is going to happen, but I, we've got to tackle this TIA. It's got to be something that's done. I don't want to wake up in mid-June because we just didn't prioritize it, or we gave too many tasks to get done that it wasn't done. So there's my thoughts on the things we discussed at that meeting and kind of a prioritization.
And Audra, do you agree with the timetable on the TIA that Mr. Johnson mentioned?
Yes, I made that promise, that I'd have it to the planning commission in June in first reading to council at the second meeting in June.
Okay. Ms. Cox.
I think I would just echo the priority from Councilman Johnson. We discussed the TIA, putting teeth in that to allow us the ability to stop or slow growth where the roads can't handle it. If they can't handle it, it's a safety issue, and I'm looking forward to seeing some actual words on paper and memos that applies both to the planning commission and to this council that gives us the tools that we need in order to protect the citizens in this county. The CIP portion, I agree with that, and I understand that RFATs does a large portion, but it doesn't do the majority of my district. So I'm requesting that we get some direction from staff prior to second reading of the budget to know how much to budget to do the CIP for the unincorporated areas and the areas that's outside the scope of the RFAT study. Otherwise, I don't know how we do that. So I would, I would like to get some help with that. I would also like, prior to second reading of the budget, that we have an assessment from staff as to how much we need to increase our fees for our planning department. Ours are woefully inadequate. Growth needs to pay for growth. We need to have those numbers, and I'd like to have some information from staff as to what the other municipalities are charging, and make sure that it's comparable, especially when we're talking about the larger developments, not the small business guys or the guys that are coming who want to put a roof on top of their shed in the backyard. I'm talking about the preliminary plats and the time that it takes to go into these sorts of things. We need to make sure that we are charging those businesses, what it costs to do that, and not passing that on to the residents. I think I'll leave it there. It sounds like we've got consensus on that.
Mr. Ronnie.
I want to fall back and mention the comp plan, the UDO, the TIA, the CIP. You know, when we come on council over five years ago, we were faced with the UDO.
And you had no gray hair.
And I had no gray hair. Good point. And we threw that out pretty rapidly, once we got on council. We had tons of people come in and lobby that this wasn't right for York County. Now that hindsight, we all have 2020 vision, some of the things that was in the UDO probably would have been addressing some of these same concerns that we're crossing now. But we threw that out, but had we known, that may have stayed in and gave us a better chance to address some of these. And ever since then, over the five, six years, we've been kind of piecemealing it, one by one as we go. When we had a document that we worked on, or previous council had worked on for over two-plus years, spent probably in excess of $100,000 or more putting this thing together, staff time, volunteers, study groups, Chad holding up three fingers for something.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand. So we were attempting to address some of these things. And lo and behold, this council was influenced by none other than probably a plethora of developers that came and said, this is not good for York County. But here we are now, trying to do what that UDO was set out to do. So it's no surprise to me now that everybody's all up in arms saying about, whether it's growth, we need to have TIA's done, CIP done. I think we had something that was relatively close to what we're asking for now by certain areas of this county. But we can't go back and undo what we did five years ago. We can only go forward, and I think, looking at the TIA's and the CIP, and the comp plan that's coming down pretty soon. I think we'll get there, but I think we are probably several years behind where we would have been or we should have been. You know, we get people talking about the traffic, getting the infrastructure in place before some of this development takes place. In certain areas, I think that train has already left the building. Now, we're playing catch-up. There's no question about it. We're playing catch-up, and we're probably 10 years behind on planning. We're probably 20 years behind on the funding. You know, penny's for progress, can't address it all. You know, we're probably getting shortchanged a lot more than people think with some of the state funding. So we're just, we're clawing and grabbing at this thing, and hopefully, we're able to rectify some of the issues, but they're not all going to go away. There's still going to be traffic problems. We saw some pictures of the lake. If we didn't build another house over in that area, we're still not addressing that problem. So what do we do? There's no silver bullet, like has been discussed, but we can take some small steps. But I'm here to tell you, if we don't build another single house, and I thought about this when we saw those pictures up, if we don't build another house in some of these areas, we still going to have the same problems year in, year out. So how do we fall back and address the pictures? How do we clean that up? How do we, we can do things to slow it down, but if we don't build another house five years from now, those pictures will still be the same-looking pictures. So what do we do? I mean, that's the million-dollar question. So, I hear some whispers going on, but that's it in a nutshell, and I'm willing to look at some things that will help us and guide us to the point that we need to get to. But it's not going to get fixed overnight. It's not going to get fixed next year. It'd probably take five years before we able to get to something that will get us on the right track. I wish we could snap our fingers and undo it or correct it, but it's not going to happen. But we can put some measures in place that slow down, whether it's the planning commission that approves some of this stuff, or give us a little more teeth to say no to some developments in certain areas. But it's, it's going to be tough, and it's not going to be easy, and it's not going to get fixed overnight.
And before I go to Mr. Winkler, if I could, just give some reminders on the UDO situation, which, as written, there were a lot of things the majority of council members disagreed with, but also, as a point of fact, that was referred to committee, Mr. Chapel, to take the good out of it that we all thought was good, and things like paying for a contractor to put a ceiling fan, things like that, out to come back for a better, clean proposal, more positives than negatives. But I guess the only way to put that is it died in committee. Next person, Mr. Winkler.
All right. For me, I'm going to be fairly short. Staffs asked for direction from council. For me, the top three priorities would be the rewrite of the traffic impact analysis ordinance, put the teeth in it so that we can, as council and the planning commission, can do what needs to be done to take care of the safety concerns for developments as they come in. Number two would probably be Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We have put a lot of our citizens' time and our staff's efforts into that. That should be a priority, to get that finished and in use. And then, three would be, you know, capital improvement plan. I think that's great. The RFAT study handles most of the county where the issues are right now as far as growth.
East of the eastern half.
Yeah, which is where we're having the issues. I would like to see something in the budget, though, since that's going to be around October or so when that's done, for us to kind of figure out what we need to do to look at the rest of the county, where that doesn't cover. If we don't budget for it, we're never going to do it. So I'd like to, something in the budget for us to be able to say, okay, now we've got RFATs, let's build on it for the rest of the county.
So to wrap it up, so it's on the record now. It's not a workshop, it's clearly stated. I think I heard, and any councilmen, feel free to correct me, but recognize the TIA is the highest priority, and to put teeth in it and put the focus there. That deals with, of course, the most fair situation of, what created the biggest concern was road infrastructure demands based on the population. So that, for future developments, there's nothing more fair and direct than that, per the council's consensus. Also, I heard a majority support the CIP, but per Mr. Johnson's point, we need to know the cost and have that as part of the budget. Is that going to be, I'm assuming that's doable. Audra. Okay. And use the RFATs as a model or whatever, and kind of modify based on that. And then, per what we've all talked about to bring this up, too, the two big problems were traffic load and protecting the lake, which I'm sure we're unanimous in wanting to protect the lake. And we, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we talked about this, I guess, last fall, spring, somewhere in there, there was general recognition that the watershed proposal may be the best way to do that. So I think for Mr. Johnson's point, again, we need to kind of know what factor cost that's going to be in the present budget the best you can. You're not a miracle worker, but I would hope you could do better on some of these pennies estimations we've had from years past. But I hear the council, council member, correct me if I'm wrong, that we all agree that that should be the focus of staff right now, the TIA, the CIP and its cost, and a budget item on the watershed. If I've said that correctly, we're done. If I did not, then, yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, the only thing that, about the comprehensive plan, and once we get to, is actually after, not just passing it, but implementing it and going from there. But we had to pass it first.
Correct. And then know the budget requirement. Mr. Henderson.
Yes, I'm kind of danged if I do and danged if I don't. So I'm going to have to go ahead and mention the fact that, you know, we've been through this, we keep going full circle on a lot of these different things. Now, I think this, there's something's going to really take place with this TIA situation. I think something's going to take place with the capital improvement plan. I really believe that. I really believe we're going to have something that we can actually apply to situations. But when we're talking about the UDO, we're talking about the critical watershed overlay and all these things, you know, like our gentleman that left us not too long ago, you know, talk's cheap. It takes a lot of money to buy land. So, in other words, we have been through this so many times, and if I, and if I were to ran again, and if I were going to end up winning again, and if I'd run again and win again, by gosh, I'm liable to be drawing my social security before we have something Now, this UDO thing, folks, I read a good bit of it, whether you want to believe it or not. I know for a fact that the UDO had stuff in it from Southern California that paid, cut and pasted for South Carolina. There was stuff cut and pasted from Europe. Cut and pasted for a lot of stuff that didn't even apply to this part of the world when it comes to vegetation, to trees, to a lot of other things that were, again, cut and pasted. And ask, now, don't misunderstand me, there was some good stuff in it, but it was overwhelming. And guess where a big portion of that comes from? And who will eventually, who is really wanting after all of us? The United Nations. No, I'm not a conspiracy theorist. This is fact. And they want to take away from this local control right here. They want to take away the local control from you folks. I'm just asking you, please go read up on it. Don't laugh at me. Go read up on it. It's called Agenda 21. And folks, I'm telling you, who better is it that, whether it's piecemeal or whether it's a big, thousand-page book, that we take it upon ourselves locally? Who knows our area better than we do? Who knows our area better than we do? Why not do it locally? Now, all I can say is this, if we keep doing what we've always done, we're going to get what we're going to always get, nothing. And that's exactly the road we're on. Talking about the Critical Watershed Overlay, EPA, there's a lot of places out here now that, three years ago, if... that three years ago, if a simple water puddle shows up, if your dog urinates and makes a water puddle, it may be subject to the EPA now. If you don't believe me, look it up. So, therefore, when it comes to critical watershed overlay, folks, there's already buffers on creeks and streams way back across the county there somewhere. We don't need to keep going after, it's a wild goose chase. Why not move forward on something that matters before the land is torn up, before it's all gone and before the lake is filled up? Then we're going to have to pipe in water from somewhere else. And that may not matter to some folks, but you great, great grandchildren is going to have a problem with you because we had a chance to do something about it. I've never claimed to be a tree hugger, but I certainly like looking at one from a distance. I like being a good steward of what God's given us, and by gosh, we better be a good steward of it. I don't know what else to do. I mean, my gosh, I'd pound my head on this right here if it would make things change But that's what I feel like I've been doing for two years. Everybody talking a good talk. No action. So, I'm just asking, please, even if we have to do it little step by little step and think this thing through and it be done at a local, local level as to who knows your, the area better than anyone else? You know, it's been said that planning cannot do it all. Well, let some of it fall back on us, it's part of our job too. Citizens have been involved, they've told us what they've wanted. My area's told us, told us what they wanted for a long time, but it seems like it's mind over matter. So, I'm asking you, please, now, this is not the diplomatic way to handle this and move forward, but I'm asking you simply do the right thing whether you like me or not. Please, as we move forward, do it and laugh at me, but please do the right thing. I certainly would appreciate it. It's about time.
Are we still on seven?
Yeah, we're...
We will.
Just to wrap up that frustration, I'm sure it's clear that the council does want action and teeth on the TIA and the CIP, but we got to know the budget requirements. And I'm sure some of Mr. Henderson's frustration comes from the watershed discussion that didn't go anywhere almost a year now. So, we want to, per Mr. Johnson's point, have that as part of the budget proposal. But do you have, yes?
The only other thing is the comprehensive plan and Planning Commission recommended adding an overlay as a tool. I think an overlay is a good tool and hope to see it in.
Well, we're going there.
No, that doesn't mean I support the next, the overlay we're talking about, it's just right now the overlay's not.
But that's where the overlay discussion's coming up.
Bruce's discussion, right now, the overlay's not even a tool that we have in the council.
Right, so, yes, ma'am?
I'll echo that I would like to have it in the toolkit to the extent that Planning Commission doesn't change that.
Okay, can we get over to that item because we're not getting there yet before we have some discussion on that? Or is that, did you want?
This is for the comprehensive plan. Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm through with that, but I'll make sure that's not.
Did you want to add something?
I do have one question for Councilman Johnson. Right now, the ordinance that was read, I'm sorry, I lost track, in April, I was asked not, the temporary freeze ordinance, I was asked not to present it to the Planning Commission in May, so I'm just not sure what I'm supposed to do with it next. Do you want me to move it forward or?
I'd like to present it to the council, to the Planning Commission at the next Planning Commission meeting, however, you can strike the parts that Mr. Kendry said violate state law.
Okay.
And I know too, a majority of council members...
I think we have to have that as an action item for it to go to the Planning Commission that way. I think we have to vote on it to go that route.
I think it has to go the way the council approved it.
That was a motion to prove it as presented.
But I agree with Councilman Johnson.
I can...
Well, then, I'd prefer to move it to the Planning Commission, but I don't want it to go, the way it was passed violates state law from our understanding. I'd like those parts stripped out so that's what's presented to the Planning Commission is actually something we can enact as opposed to just this broad...
How about I do this? I can schedule it for the, I can schedule it for May 16th for second reading only. The motions can be made to strike the portions that you want. I will present it to the Planning Commission, then what comes out of that meeting?
Very good.
Is that working? Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just add to that. I've had at least one council member, I know the majority at the time said, well, they didn't support it as written, but they wanted a fair vetting and to go to the public. If we had a public hearing at the next meeting, does time allow for that, Michael?
No, I do not have time to advertise for the May 16th.
Okay, so then we'll end up having, if it goes that far, a public hearing on third reading, which I guess based on our timeframe, that's the only option we got?
Yes.
Okay, but, so let's go to the, are you clear on the TIA, CIP and the watershed? Move forward on this if the budget allows? Okay, so let's go to the next item. Councils to consider first reading by title only of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 155 zoning code by adding Section 155.350 to create the Lake Wiley Use and Development Overlay District defined as that area located within one mile of the 470-foot elevation contour of Lake Wiley. And within this Lake Wiley Use and Development Overlay District, remove apartments, townhomes, condominiums, hotels and motels as permitted use from the RC-1, RC-2, RD-1 and RD-2 zoning districts to establish conditional zoning for apartments, townhomes, condominiums, hotels and motels within the RC-1, RC-2, RD-1 and RD-2 zoning districts to establish the maximum number of residential building permits allowed annually for residential development projects, single-family and multifamily, greater than 10 acres in size to 35 and/or limit the amount of development, land disturbance within the project boundary to 25% annually, whichever occurs first, to establish a family exemption for certain property transfers from the permitting and land disturbance maximums, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other minors related thereto. So, Mr. Henderson, you want to give motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve this for first reading and for, to give counts, I mean, give staff direction on the possibilities of altering, modifying, tweaking, whatever you want to call it, in order to make this more acceptable for this body and for folks that are really wanting and thinking that this is well within reach for the first time in a long time. I'd like to move that we approve it based upon those stipulations.
We have a second discussion. Now, before we get into discussion, let's per the comments of the recent item and per the concerns about what's legal and what's not. If I could have you, Ms. Miller, per like you talked about at the agenda meeting, point out any fault lines in this, what's written per Mr. Henderson's comment, what, you know, what's usable, let's have the staff kind of massage it a little bit to make it practical. Can you point out at this moment, or will you point out, you certainly can, will you point out at this moment, the what's just not practical in this as written, as stated? And we'll start there.
Staff has two issues that need some direction from council on. First is the issue of the conditional zoning. We have talked about it, we're not exactly sure what that is referring to. Based on the most recent Enabling Act, conditional zoning isn't really something that's allowed in the state. That sounds like a special exception and that needs to go through the ZBA. So, the three options staff can think of, depending on what council wants addressed by this ordinance is, one, all apartments and multifamily are special exceptions and you want them to go to the ZBA for further review. Two, you want additional development standards for apartments and multifamily, they could be anything ranging from additional buffering requirements, greater landscaping, limited impervious. Or three, council wants to approve all apartments and multifamily, and in order to do that, the most likely scenario and come up with right now is I'd have to remove it from all zoning districts and then present a new zoning district that someone would have to rezone to. With that said, if it's going to apply to a limited geographic area, we've always got the issue of exclusionary zoning, so I would need some understanding of why it is limited to the certain area. And then the other question I have is the number 35. I would just like to know from the staff level where that number came from because we do have to have a basis when we limit development. And just so council knows, we did, the staff did do a quick takedown on what developers have been doing. And my staff pulled it actually for the Lake Wiley and for Mill areas and just not to bore you, but to give you an idea of where permits are per project. In Mill Creek Falls, in 2013, it was 40 permits per year, and these will all be per year, 29 in 14 and 40 in 15. For Timberlake, it was 17 in 2013, 36 in 2014, 67 in 2015. For Hawks Creek up in Fort Mill, in 2014, it was 58, in 2015, it was 51. And then in Summer Lake, it was 2013, it was 28, 2014 was 10 and 2015 is 52. So, by the time we get to 2015, these developments are vastly exceeding that 35 limit, so it would be a cut for them. So, I do need some understanding of where the number has come from.
So, let me hit you with one more thing too, since overlay word is the prime nucleus of this. And I get it, I mean, if I lived on the lake and I saw what used to be a cove now I can walk across because there's nothing but mud there now, I sympathize, I understand, yes, let's fix that. But based on the parameters that we have to work to be effective and have teeth to what we're going to do instead of just feel-good stuff, is there any negatives about the overlay in general that was, or, I mean, is it just generally an overlay or is it just certain areas we have to avoid when we specify an overlay?
The overriding issue with any overlay is we have to identify exactly what it is we're trying to achieve with the special requirements or standards per se of the overlay. So, I do understand, I've heard it, I understand everyone's frustration of we have too much growth for the Lake Wiley area, but that can also be said for the Fort Mill area because that is a question that Councilman Johnson has come up with. So, when we're picking these boundaries, there has to be an articulated and substantiated reason as to why you pick these boundaries and what is the end goal? What specific quantifiable thing are you trying to achieve? And so, that is, that is what staff, if staff needs to perform the research to have that backup data, then we need to know that as well.
So, I feel like we're kind of getting back to where we were when we talked about this almost a year ago and if, and correct me, council member?
Are we going to have a discussion?
But yes, we're going to have discussion. Just let me run the meeting, okay?
Well, this is just different than how we normally handle the other...
Well, it's because it's so important, I want the council members to have in their head the pros and cons instead of us talking for 20 minutes and realize, well, we legally can't do that anyway. So, that's what I'm trying to address right now before we have our discussion. But that being said, I think that we had some concern back then when we were talking about the watershed versus overlay. Are there examples of overlays that work around lakes or is it just, I think you mentioned Charlotte, Mecklenburg County uses the overlay as their way, I mean, uses the watershed as their way to deal with that water protection because the overlay nucleus of that is to protect our water and our lake and our quality of life. That's the foundation of that, the overlay to protect the water, the lake.
Correct, that is why staff made the recommendation to do a water, to base it on the watershed as opposed to a boundary and focus more on the impervious surface of all the projects within that watershed, however we define it, because that would be a defined boundary, and that is how Charlotte does it. Charlotte has...
Do you know of any model of a lake overlay that works?
The one that everyone points to is the Charlotte one, that's used in Charlotte, Mecklenburg County.
So, the watershed is the overlay?
Yeah, they use the watershed.
Okay, now that we have those factors in our head, now the council members can talk and not go down a road where it might not be a road worth going down. So, who wants to speak first? Mr. Williams?
The, and this, and the phasing especially, I mean, we had some of this discussion in the, in the workshop the other day and talking about whether it needed to be included. I, I'm not a fan of that, I don't think it'll present, it doesn't do us any long-term solutions. Eventually, we ended up with the same number of people. I think it'd be very hard to administer and maintain. The Lake Wiley overlay, I mean, one of the, the one that I keep referring to that I think would be a good idea to implement is the one that, that right before I got on council, they spent about two years getting public input and did a whole lot, and it gave Lake Wiley some of their own ideas. I really hate that we've had two more since then. I hate starting over in, when we got a basis to go from. This one, if we could have fixed it with definitions, I think we could have done that in December. And the only thing, the one thing that is different here is the multifamily and the hotels, I do think that'd be best addressed in the watershed. My vote is never based on how much I like you, Bruce, despite what you might think, but they do agree that, that we've been talking about it for a long time, we need to do something. I just don't want to do something just so we can say we did something. I feel like that's what we did in December and that's why we're already here and that hadn't even had a chance to come to fruition and we're already talking about doing other things. At the workshop, the comprehensive plan is supposed to, to help in this area. You know, looking back, I also agree with Ms. Miller as we got the same problems in Fort Mill. I really hope that we can address them the same way. I mean, having a moratorium here and an overlay here doesn't make a whole lot of sense that the, whatever we can do to manage growth should apply to both, but since I just said the moratorium, I voted for that one on first reading and looking back, I should have voted to defer it, but I, but I do believe we need to do something. I don't, the same thing I said at first reading to them, I don't think this is it and won't support it at third reading, but, but we need to do something. And the fact that you're talking about making, you know, looking at better ways to do stuff makes me a little more comfortable with it, but that's, just to have an overlay to say we have one, I don't want to do that. I want to make sure that it, that it does something. We talked about, another thing we talked about at the workshop was, was we pay staff an awful lot of money to give us recommendations, hopefully we will listen to them.
Mr. Henderson?
You know, you mentioned about the overlay from a few years ago that was proposed, and I went out of my way a few times with some of the key folks that were involved with that that I felt like the overlay was going to be, it was going to crash and burn. Well, with it being so spread out so far toward Clover and with the extreme regulatory conditions that it had on it such as signage, getting signage changed, to, I think even the painting schemes and all this kind of stuff, had to go retroactive without it even being a city. And, I mean, you know, I appreciate the fact that folks hold a lot of confidence in me, but, you know, but I cannot be a seven-member council, a town, a city administrator and a mayor all in one. I can't do it. It's impossible. Sometimes I'd like to think I'm Superman, but I'm not. And I learned that rather quick. So, you know, this is more simple, it's smaller, it's more straight to the heart of the matter, it's dealing strictly with the problematic areas. And again, I'm willing to, and I think my constituents would be willing to consider, you know, as far as tweaking and negotiating some portions of this in the RDRC or whatever that would help protect the lake, help... that would help protect the lake, help slow the growth down, not stop it, slow it down so we can catch up with the TIA, with the CIP. But right now, folks, we're, we're, we're heading down a, down a mountain road, and the sign at the bottom says, we're doing ninety miles per hour, and the sign at the bottom says, "Bridge out." And we can't just, we can't keep doing it. And I'd like to address what, as far as the purpose is. I started off with my email, "In highest regard, in concern for safety, lacking infrastructure, road improvements needed. Preservation of the county's primary water source to maintain a proper level and temperature" Uh, this is very important, and people don't even mention this, "to maintain a proper level and temperature of the lake for future human consumption and normal operation of the power plant." Anybody thought of that? I'm just going to say, folks, we better get busy. Reduce overcrowding of schools, and to maintain overall quality of life and to sustain property values. I may have already said that, but I added it again. It's important that we help maintain and take, look after humans, too. Not just the water, not just the trees, not just the property value and the prosperity of developers. We've got to look out for everybody involved. And right now, we haven't been too, we haven't done a good job of that. I've pleaded, I've begged, I've done everything I possibly can. I've heard others talk about it, I've heard others compliment things that I've wanted to do, such as the reduction of permit, permits. Do it in a subtle way. Other places do it, many places do it, certainly short of breaking the law, certainly short of, and it's more thawed out. Why can't this move forward? It's not as complicated as the last one, it's not as extreme as the last one, nowhere near it. But it certainly helps with the problem. And no, this is not just passing something just to say we did something, kind of like some of those folks in Washington do, and read it afterward. Well, we know what's in it. And it's a lot better than it was before, it's common sense, and I plead with my fellow councilman, council madam, council lady, and everyone involved, it's time to move forward. No more studies, no more just waiting on studies, I should say, I should say. Not a matter of not getting people involved, I don't mean that. But this stuff of waiting and waiting, before we finally make a move, waits what broke the wagon down. So let's please, let's please move forward. This thing can be tweaked. I'm asking you to support first reading. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? When I asked council to vote four weeks ago on a freeze, I did so not because it was an answer, but because it would give us time to get the answer. And that, to me, was the most important thing, is getting to an answer. I am concerned that parts of this ordinance are not the answer. I think there are some parts in here that I can agree with. And I, and one of the problems is, it hasn't been fleshed out, it hasn't been talked about. We, we don't know how a TIA will automatically, the effect that it'll have, or the CIP, I get that. I think that, I certainly support a restriction on apartments, townhomes, condos, and hotels and motels within a certain area of the lake. That makes sense to me, that makes total sense, that, that, we talk about water quality, that makes sense. The thirty-five maximum homes, that's a little more iffy for me, just from a standpoint of, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it solves the problem, and I think what we have to do is solve this problem once and for all. We have to enact some ordinances which solve this problem. Would a freeze for Lake Wiley solve their problems? No, it would not solve their problems. What it would do is simply allow, Lake, and it won't solve Fort Mill's problem, what it'll simply do is allow us the actual, some time to come up with that plan, adopt the comprehensive land use plan, adopt the overlay that the land plan says is needed or should be considered for that area. These are things we need. I'm going to support Bruce in first reading, I'm going to vote yes. And I'm going to vote yes because we need to be serious about these types of things, and we need to flesh this out, and we need to have this discussion. Will I support a hundred percent of this at a second reading? No. And just as people have said on mine, they would not support all of it. I will not support all of this at a second reading, but I will support first reading. I believe that we, we do, Bruce is right, we have to quit talking, we have to actually do something. And this, combined with appropriately putting money in the budget to tackle the issues we just discussed, discussed in our previous conversation, will get us where we want to go. If you want to know a council's priorities, look at its budget. Our budget reflects zero priorities for controlling growth as of right now. We have an obligation to change that over the next month as we go through the budget, and I'm certainly willing to consider this for a first reading. Ms. Cox?
In April, we passed an ordinance to allow a freeze, and we did so knowing full well that it was, had parts of it that were illegal. So I find it very difficult to see how anyone who voted for the freeze could vote in opposition to this request that is less than that. And I agree with Councilman Johnson that sometimes we have to take a step in order to start moving, and, and I'm surprised and glad that he's supporting this because it is not the answer, and clearly there are questions and things that need to be vetted out, but we need to get this to the public. We need to get, we need to get over the first hurdle, and the first hurdle is to start taking some action in an overlay format. So I'm supporting this, and-
Mr. Roddy?
Am I up next? You know, we started out with having Audra explain legally what we can do and what we can't do, and I'm glad we took that route to have her explain to start out, because I had the same conversation with her this afternoon about one-thirty. And the conversation went exactly how it was given to her about the legal aspect of what we can do. What's the goal? Where did the, where did the permits of thirty-five, where did that number come from? You know, some of those questions that surround what's been proposed here, I'm not convinced enough to say I'll vote for it first reading. To me, I think that's just rubber stamping it right now, not to say that once it gets flushed out, I can't change my mind to vote for it, but when, there's so many questions about what we're going to achieve by doing it. This is not a long-term solution. You know, someone says, "Let's hit the pause button." How long, how long is this going to pause, how long is this going to stay in effect to the point where we get something that's a long-term plan? And I think we've all said that the comp plan that's being worked on will address some of these concerns. I'm not going to support it at first reading because it has so much in it that brings legal questions. And like Chrissy said, you know, we voted on something in April that we knew had things that were illegal in it. I don't think, I didn't support the one in April, so I'm not going to support this one. And that one still has to go through the process to get cleaned up, to take the things out that makes it legal and makes it a perfect fit for Fort Mill. And I'll reiterate that, we have second reading to go on the one for Fort Mill, we have second reading to go on this one. If it's cleaned up to the point that I feel comfortable of putting my approval on it, which I only get one vote, it only needs four to pass, but I'm going to stand true to what I believe in, I'm not going to rubber stamp it now and hope for it to get flushed out. The same thing that we say we don't like that goes on in Washington needs to be here, too. You know, we say we don't like when Washington does it, you're saying, "Let's do it here." So don't say you don't like it in Washington, and then say, "Well, let's do it here and flush it out later." So if it gets cleaned up, it'll get my support, but if it stays with all the questions, which I don't think we can get by with limiting thirty-five unless we get the legal aspect of it. But I do think the comp plan will address some of, some of these concerns. But I, I sit up here and I always hear some of the rhetoric that goes on in the public hearing or the two-minute session, and people make the comments and point out what each individual, each individual says about an item. And I felt like a lot of it, even my name was called, about supporting things over in Lake Wiley. I supported the rec situation, I supported the pool situation, I supported numerous things in the Lake Wiley area. But to have people to sit up here and point the finger, we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort into whatever each one of us read up on, to study up, to make sure we vote the right way, we vote our conscience. And I've even gotten emails about my incorporation idea. That idea was being tossed around before I got on council. I heard from several other council members, outgoing council members, that this was always an issue with the area. It's not me suggesting, it's been on the table for years, and nothing's been done to address it. But Bruce, I've supported you in several things over in your area, and I hope you don't feel like I'm one of the ones that vote against you or vote for things because it comes from you. So I just wanted to make that clear. But if we're able to clean it up, maybe I'll support it second and third reading, but right now, I didn't support the last one for Fort Mill, and I won't support this one.
Mr. Winkler?
Thank you.
Are you sure?
As with Councilmember Johnson's proposal a few weeks ago, there's a lot of stuff in this I don't like, but we have problems, we have issues with growth, we have got to do something about it. I think one of the first things we have to do, you know, I don't think it's rubber stamping it to get it to a second reading so that the public can come and tell us their input and, and give us ideas on how to fix it. I supported in first reading Councilmember Johnson's, I'm going to support Councilmember Henderson's tonight in first reading, but what, you know, I said, to get to a second reading and let the public come and have their input, what I really support overall in the county, though, is a traffic impact analysis that gives us the ability to stop these things, the comprehensive land use plan that we put in place and actually use it to look at these things and take care of those types of things, which is the, what they're designed for, the capital improvement plan, that type thing, that's what those are designed to do. You know, we made some major zoning changes the end of last year, and we've barely had a few months for anybody new to even come and apply for anything because those changes just went into effect. So those are things I support, but at this point, I'm going to support first reading so that we can get the public in to give us feedback on this and try to fix both those and all these other issues as well as we can at one, to get something in place to address this.
Mr. Henderson?
Just real quick, I wanted to add that, please, list, you know, just consider the fact that, I'm making it very clear, that there's still negotiation that can still take, take place here, thirty-five to twenty-five percent. The sole purpose was to slow the growth, no more, no less, no underlying agenda, no, no bad motive, no nothing, except to slow the growth, that's all. That, that was the key there. And then also, I want to mention conditional zoning as to what Ms. Audra was talking about, conditional zoning versus a variance. You know, if we allow this to be some form of a variance on the conditional zoning and having council more involved with this, as far as deciding on where to strategically locate hotels and so forth, any type of multi-level, multifamily, offices, whatever, on that variance, there's a lot of things, the key, and it's just like the conversation we had a few days ago about not having massive runoff, mass runoff and filling up the lake with oil, gas, transmission fluid, pesticide, whatever it may be, grit off of shingles and, and all that type of thing, and if you have it further back away from the shore, that was the sole purpose of trying to get these larger buildings, larger parking lots back off of the water, because we see, I, I challenge anyone to go up behind Walmart in Lake Wiley, go behind Lowe's in Lake Wiley and look at the detention pond back there. Look at it when there's a downpour like we've had here recently. You'll see why your grandchildren's going to have seven legs. You're going to see why your children's going to, your, your, your great-great-grandchildren's going to be messed up because of what we're putting in, putting in the water. I'm talking like an environmentalist tree hugger, but I'm just telling you the truth. They already talked about the fish that we're getting out of there, already talking about all the other things that's going on in Lake Wiley right now. I think it, I think we can, we can recover the thing if we just start doing some right things. So, okay, they say you're supposed to shut up when you feel like you might have something won, so I'm going to shut up.
You took the words right out of my mouth. But I, I do want to say certainly, and I've seen the one where the Girl Scout hut thing used to be, their little lake property where it's really just a mud hole now, you can walk on it. So I agree, and I understand the frustration, especially from Councilman Henderson that's been trying to fight for the people in his district for two years now, and trying to come up with a plan and all that time, it just kind of gets pushed aside by his, some of his proposals. And I think a large part of that was just due to people, certainly this council, we don't know this stuff, this is not our job, we're not planners and zoning people, so we count on staff. And, you know, it's maybe in terms of the, the panic need for it, there's been frustration, but I, I've still got to look at it from the fact that I do accept the fact that we need to do something. I'm not into this, well, I can't really support anything as written, but I'll support it because Mr. Henderson's a good guy, and we'll let it get all worked out on the next reading. If this came forward with the teeth of the watershed that we talked about a year ago, and that being the overlay, it's a proven overlay that works and it does provide the essence of what we're trying to do, protect the water supply and protect the coves, I can go with that, I don't have a problem with that. The apartments, condos, hotels within a certain range of the shoreline of the lake, I can agree to that, that makes sense. But that's going to require a lot of major adjustments in this, so I can't support this as is with all the holes in it, hoping it'll get changed. Now, if we come back and we have that overlay as stated, and we have direct comments about apartments, hotels, condos on the shoreline, makes sense, smart growth, I'm for it. But I don't want to vote for anything that's got so many holes in it, and there's kind of a panic state here. It's got to be logical to me throughout. I'm not one that wants to have government interfere with people's property rights, but in this case, we do have to provide some guidance on smart growth. But when you say thirty-five homes per year and all that, I'm, I'm just not into the, what I see as socialism. I think the best thing government can do is get out of the way, but in this case, government can provide its proper position of providing for proper growth in a smart way, but this has got a lot of redoing that needs to be done for me to feel like it's something that can pass the mustard test and provide what we really need. So I agree, there's something needs to be done, I just think this has got too many question marks on it to support it as is. If it gets massaged to the point where it's more clean-cut, I'll have no problem supporting it, but as it's written, I'm not going to support it. So that being said, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Oppose, no. No. You got it? Next item. Consider approval of a resolution to designate Oakdale Road as a no-through truck route from the intersection of Saluda Road, South Carolina 72, to the intersection of Mount Holly Road, South Carolina 901, to prevent heavy truck traffic on a residential street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Council consider an emergency temporary dwelling permit request, 2332 Brightwood Drive.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Consider first reading case number 1527, rezoned from RC 1 to BD 3 at 316 Eastview Road in the Rock Hill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Consider first reading case number 1602, rezoned from RC 2 to BD 3 at Ed Thompson Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
And there's some, okay. Discussion. Yes.
I'm curious. It says that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. Talking three-quarters of an acre. But it's not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Is it not consistent with a comprehensive land use plan that exists today? Or will it be consistent with the one we're about to pass in two months?
It's not consistent with the one today. For the one we're about to pass, I don't know off the top of my head. The reason for this is he's just extending the parking lot for his apartment complex, so staff didn't feel it was a big issue.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County and a company known for the time being as Project Crown, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with Project Crown and providing for payment by Project Crown of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Request authorization to apply and to accept, if awarded, a South Carolina coordinating council grant in the amount of up to $300,000 for project glass, no local matches required.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Council to consider a new purchasing position added to current budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Bill, do you want to make any comments or?
I'm at Tiara.
Okay, Tiara.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. As you know, the county is growing expeditiously. And with that being said, that's a good problem to have. However, it does create some challenges for staff, specifically for the purchasing department. We currently have a staff of six employees. We've not had any staff increase since 2001. And currently, we're supporting 30 departments in terms of their purchasing and procurement needs. As you may know, with purchasing, we're not only making the solicitations, we're actually managing the entire process from the cradle to the grave, meaning any surplus items as well. Having said that, with the budget changes that we've had over the years, we've had an increase of 288 full-time equivalencies since 2001. We've added three Pennies for Progress programs with an additional program anticipated in November of 2017. We've had over 108% budget increase from FY 2005 with a total of $26.6 million budgeted to $55.4 million in this current year's budget. We've recently approved an $89 million bond referendum for capital projects, and we are anticipating that we'll start receiving bids in October to December timeframe to solicit for the general contractors as well as for FF and E requirements for that particular We also have some new initiatives that we'd like to implement as we move forward. I've spoken to council before in that regard with the purchase card program, which will allow flexibility of the departments to purchase small items. At this time, all purchases, this is a central purchasing county, and having said that, all purchases, whether it's a PIN all the way to construction, is actually managed through the purchasing department. Currently, we're also in the process of implementing a contract administration module so that we may accurately monitor the contracts for the county in terms of compliance and term expiration. And we're also responsible now for surplus management of real estate property. So, having said that, we just don't have the staffing at this point to continue to function as an entity to its fullest capability. Having said that, I've been in discussion with the county manager and received authorization to create a new position, which we did and submitted to the MGT recruitment aspect. They're the same ones who completed the comprehensive, the comp plan, the study for reclassification positions. And the position has recently come back for authorization or actually consideration for purchasing manager. This position will, in essence, act as an assistant director, if you will. As you may know, most of the departments have an assistant director. However, in the purchasing department, we don't have a succession plan in that regard. So, I am looking for someone who will be able to assist us with these oncoming projects. I realize that the new budget is coming up, but this is a peak time for us as this is winding down to the end of the FY. And we're very busy during that timeframe as well as the new FY where we'll receive additional purchases, purchasing requests, I should say. There's a lot of construction going on, and we just want to make sure that we get out in front of it to ensure that we are actually ensuring that we're properly serving the departments. There are increases in demands for requisitions, and we want to be able to assist them in doing so. So, I ask for your consideration this evening that we move forward and ask for your consideration and ultimately approval for this position.
Questions?
Mr. Winkler.
Well, not really questions. I emailed my questions in at 1:00 in the morning or whatever time it was I read this thing the other night. And thank y'all for answering them, I guess. The biggest question I had at that time was why now instead of just a new position with the new budget? But I understand it's really more to just get the process started now.
Yes, sir.
We don't wait 60 days and then have to start the hiring process and everything. So, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
I fully see the need for this position. My understanding from looking at some of the early budget notes is that 55.73 new full-time positions were requested. Only 18 are going to be given. Basically, 19 are going to be given because we're giving one now. That probably should be a part of the budget, so it's 19. When I look through, so it goes back to the question of what are our priorities? And certainly, our priorities need to be able to be able to do the work, service the needs of the county. Yet what I don't see reflected in this budget, every person in this council has said today at some point, "I think growth is a problem. I think planning has a problem in that there's not enough people." Yet we've hired, based on what I'm looking at, one senior environmental compliance coordinator has been recommended for planning. Everything else, almost every position, is either going into the public defender's office or, there's a bunch of them, at least five that are going to the public defender's office. I don't have a problem funding the public defender. They do great work. They need to be funded. But I have a, I guess I'm having a problem saying, "Yeah, I'm going to approve this job now," when I can't even get enough people in planning or I can't get enough people in engineering to carry out the request of this council. And instead, we fill this spot with someone in procurement. And it's not that procurement doesn't need it. It's weighted. And so, I guess my question to you, since it won't matter on Wednesday when I ask this, is was this one of the new 55.73 positions requested? And how many? I mean, I guess I'd love to see that list. I'd like to know what we didn't hire. Because that'll tell me what is important on this list. It'll tell, because I'll really get a sense of what was important to you all from a staff standpoint.
We can get you the list. This process started way before the budget process started with this position. In reference to the public defender, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I believe the reason he was selected was he has funds coming in from the state that'll be paying for all of his positions that will not be coming out of county funds.
Well, that's even worse from my standpoint or the standpoint of what we prioritize. Because it's easy to prioritize state money. It's really hard to prioritize our money. So, what you basically told me is that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 of the 18 new positions were funded by the state. So, we didn't have to prioritize those. Those just came, they plopped in our lap, we're going to hire those people. We only wanted to hire 11 new employees. And I'm not talking about growing government. I don't typically, I rail against some of our spending all the time up here. My problem is I'm having a problem swallowing hiring someone for procurement when everyone up here over the past six months has said the same thing over and over. Improve our Pennies program. Improve our roads. Improve our planning department. And I don't necessarily see that reflected in a budget that I'm about to start debating. Yet I walk in here today and I've got a grade level 27 purchasing manager position coming up. And that's my problem. And perhaps there is no answer to that tonight, but it rubs me wrong that we're hiring this. Is it needed? It's probably needed. But I know you need somebody, you need more help with Pennies. I know you need more help in planning. I know these things, yet I don't see them reflected in our budget. So, I'm struggling with that. So, there's my two cents we debate this.
Did I see your hand, Chad?
Sure. Yeah, I had some of the same concerns initially and still do. And what Councilman Johnson pointed out when I was looking at some of the things, I had some of the same questions. And a real question about, you know, the timing of the ask and the grade of the new position. But one thing that's been repeatedly made apparent that's important, this council is financial management. So, I think that in that, this does go along with that. I don't remember all of the personnel, but most of the stuff, I think that we, that people that asked for stuff that you were talking about is in there. But that's something we need to definitely tweak and make forward. I felt that the justification provided with our meeting stuff justified a lower-grade employee. But I asked Tiara over the weekend and she sent me what she just said and even more about some other stuff that the plan is doing now. So, now, I guess the timing issue, it comes down to whether I trust the county management and the HR recommendations that we do it, that it needs to happen now instead of...
After the budget process.
I would feel much more comfortable without the, if it waited till after the budget, but that's where we are.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy.
You know, just thinking about the type of money that goes through our procurement and purchasing department on a daily, on a day-to-day basis, then you add in 89 million plus the additional that we stacked on top of that, plus what we doing with Pennies. And to hear that that department really hasn't grown over the years and we've seen other ones grow in the past, and we're still not even looking at some of the other departments, but just looking at the sheer number of, the amount of money that goes through and that we're spending that goes out on, for bids and RFQs, I can certainly sympathize with the caseload or the contracts or the logistics that goes, that flows through this office and could understand the need for someone and knowing what's coming ahead kicking off October, November, December. I can see utilizing additional person, whether it's putting them or approving it now because I think there's still probably going to be some lag time, even if we approve it tonight, before someone's able to come on board. If it's outside person or someone moves up, that outside, if someone moves up, someone still has to come in and fill that job, get the training. And I guess the real question is, do we approve it now or approve it at the budget? But if HR and county manager saying, "Let's get the ball rolling now," you know, this is what they do on a day-to-day basis, make these projections, I see why not.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no.
No.
Can...
Yes, sir.
Just for...
Approve that.
And I understand that, but I think there was some important, I think there was some important questions asked by Councilman Johnson that should be responded to.
Okay.
The first one is the back of the presentation that you, the budget that you were sent, it's labeled personnel. It identifies all 55.73 positions, and it also identifies the justification. What we did is we didn't just look at this, we also looked at what we'd given out to people in the last five years, bodies. We also looked at unfunded positions that had not been filled by departments in several years. And so, it wasn't just this. There was quite a few things that we looked at. And I'm going through this because I was trying to remember, did Pennies ask for anything? And I'm looking and I don't see them in here, which would probably be the reason if they felt that they didn't, they didn't ask and they didn't justify anything. Or am I missing something?
I think they have a position open now that's been advertised for, that they're looking for.
Yeah, they do have a vacant funded position, vacant, that's good English, a vacant funded position that we have told them to send out, yes. But they didn't ask for new folks on this. They've got a, Pennies program has a new staff that are doing good things, and I think they're looking to see what they can do, what they got before they jump into anything new. But it is at the back of the book, the 55 positions, sir, 55.73. And, you know, the stuff in yellow is grant, the stuff in blue is what we recommended. And again, we looked at quite a few things. We didn't just, you know, and we'll be getting into that when we talk about this in the workshop on Wednesday, I believe.
Okay. Fair enough.
But I wanted you to see that.
Next item. Council to ratify application authorized acceptance, if awarded, state funding in the amount of $79,700 for the purpose of purchasing 115 body-worn cameras. The state funding would reimburse the county for the cost of the body-worn camera and 66.5% of the associated server cost.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item. Council to consider declaring a wrecked 2013 Ford Interceptor sedan as county surplus.
Approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Went blank there for a minute. Next item, council to consider authorization for contract negotiations for regarding RFQ twenty-three thirty-seven for consulting services associated with York County's Western Water Distribution System Master Plan update.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This is user fee.
Yes, ma'am.
This is user fee funds, right? This is not general fund.
Yeah, enterprise fund.
Okay. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-three thirty-eight regarding the purchase of three new motor greater compactor attachments to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Lycox Enterprises Incorporated, Billings, Montana, for a total amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-three forty regarding the purchase of an automated DNA extraction instrument for use by the sheriff's office to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, government scientific source of Restone, Virginia, for a total cost of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and two cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have one comment, being in the scientific field. The gold standard's been Fisher Scientific. I mean, they're, you know, your flask, everything, going back to our days in high school. They were the gold standard. They're the, the people that you tried to meet. Their bid was half the accepted bid. And the understanding was that they did not supply...
References.
A reference.
Yeah, good.
And I, I, you know, maybe I'm wrong in thinking this, but I guess their attitude would be, we're the gold standard. We don't have to provide anybody references.
And that it's, that it's protected, privileged information. They don't want to disclose who their clients are, is the thing that I was concerned about. But, you know, I didn't realize, like you say, that they are a highly respected company, that part, when I asked myself that same question.
Have you noticed all...
I do recognize the name now, but I think that I, I started to ask that very question.
Well, some of the soil sampling stuff, I'm sure you dealt with it. Clemson had their name all over pretty much everything you had.
I've seen it.
So I, I don't want to doubt the logic on what was done here, but, boy, that's half the price. So I'm gonna have to, being Fisher Scientific, I'm gonna have to vote against this one.
We should defer it.
Well, we got the motion as is. I mean, if there's any further discussion about that, council will hear it.
If you defer it, do you have to literally just throw out the bid and start again? Or can you ask, give them additional time to supply us their, their qualifications, as we've requested?
But they may not want to supply that.
I made the motion.
We requested the qualifications for references, and we...
I made the motion.
...that they were not able to provide.
I made, I made.
Sheriff's offices are here this evening, but they did advise that they talked with the industry bills that are using equipment, and no one could vouch for that particular industry, for that particular company.
So I guess they said, they just don't normally supply that on a request. That's their policy.
If they've only made three of them, that's, that's a reason. But, you know, we could defer, we could find that stuff out. But if they've, you know, if we're comfortable, we've already found that out.
Yeah, I'm just doing a gut check on this one. I, I don't know their logic, but, I mean, since they've been the standard of everything related, all this scientific stuff, I'm gonna have to, and they're half the price, I'm gonna have to vote no. But...
Tara, you've researched this, and you've proved this. You've researched this, and you're in the procurement office, and you, you recommend what they've asked for. Is it your recommendation to move forward with what's been requested by the sheriff's office? Or do we need to go back to the drawing board? Because obviously, if, if we need to do that, then I, I would be inclined to agree with...
I bet she's gonna tell us, she could've done a better job if she had a purchase man.
Ken, before you... You made the motion, second.
Actually, it's policy we're following.
Bruce and Robert made the second.
I'm concerned, because the price is so low, and we know nothing about this particular company, and they were not able to provide any references. So that was my rationale in terms of, if we can't get any good information, and if it's not the equipment that, that the sheriff's office is seeking, then I would think that would be justification to qualify them as non-responsive.
And if I was not in this field, I would understand, I mean, I would agree a hundred percent, that's, but...
But we're deferring to your, I mean, if all of us say Brett's gonna vote no, he's gonna, and we vote no, then, then it's gonna start over. So if you, if you're comfortable with...
Well, I'm, I'm just having doubt with their instrumentation my whole life. I, I just, I mean, they were the standard. So maybe they're not experts with this particular thing, but I've just gotta vote my conscience on this.
Again, the sheriff's office could really speak to the technological aspects of it, and unfortunately, they're not here this evening.
If we vote no, and this is rebid, and they still refuse to give us their qualifications, they're never going to be able to...
No, I don't...
I mean, this is kind of a...
Can we defer?
I was thinking...
Strictly policy.
I was thinking, if we vote no, we have to...
I will just simply withdraw and defer.
Well, that's per what Ms. Cox said. I guess that's the only practical option if y'all, and I'm not asking y'all to go with me on this, but...
Well, well, in doubt, put it out.
Doesn't put them behind substantially, do we know that?
But can we defer till the next meeting to try to get any more, or the sheriff's office here, or whatever? I mean, I, and maybe it's my bad. Maybe I should've called up the sheriff's office. But I even mentioned at the agenda meeting, and the more I thought about it over the weekend, I said, man, I just, you know, I can't imagine they would be second to anybody in the scientific field. So that's where I came down on. So...
Did you, did you say?
I'm withdrawing, and I'll...
Change the motion to defer?
To defer to next meeting, or however long we need here.
Well, I think just the next meeting would be adequate. Are you agreeable of that?
That's my motion.
I'm not gonna second that one, so...
Second.
So he's not, well...
You're gonna second which we...
Yeah.
To defer.
Okay, so, so we got a second on the deferral. So did we hear that first, and then go back to the original, since he didn't?
No, no, no.
It's Brett's fault anyway, let's vote yes.
He withdrew the motion before the question was restated, so that's fine.
So Robert didn't have to agree to it. Okay, so we have a new motion. Any further discussion?
I'll just say, you know, it...
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
Would concern me a little bit, one, according to what we've been told, the county manager, the sheriff's office, and the purchasing, purchasing director have already looked at this and made their recommendation, which is what we're voting on tonight. You know, if the sheriff's office looked at it and talked to others, and couldn't find anybody else that even uses that piece of equipment, it also would concern me, you know, if I go looking for a new washer for my house, I don't, if, if the least expensive one, and I know we've gotta watch taxpayers' dollars, but if it's almost fifty percent below everybody else's bid, that concerns me a little bit. Why is it that low?
But if the least expensive one's a Maytag...
Right.
Then that's, but I mean, I see what you're saying, but that's...
It's got a three-year warranty. You add that on, it's still cheaper.
Mr. Shanahan.
Yes, yes, sir. My concern with this is, basically, we'll follow on policy on this. So what, what happens if we, if we go with this, and then the next time we send out a bid, someone leaves something else out?
Well, I, I think this is being scientific, and that's why I didn't, I didn't talk to anybody.
That can be part of the...
I just voted my conscience, but I haven't, they are the standard.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, if they, if you come back in two weeks and say, you know, the sheriff's talked to this office, or whatever, and I says, don't use them, I'm, I'm with you, but I, I gotta vote my conscience on this. That's, and, you know, I didn't ask for any change, but I appreciate the conscientious attitude of the council as a whole. So question on the motion. All those in favor of the deferment? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
One no.
And you'll be able to come back in two weeks, and maybe the sheriff's office, so just, I mean...
Make sure you tell Sheriff Bruce Bryant it was, it was Brett's fault.
And maybe part of that presentation may be about the policy discussion.
And I will say this, maybe I dropped the ball, and, I mean, I just figured it was me, and I wasn't gonna interfere with council on it, but maybe now seeing the response of the council, I should've followed up and said, hey, they're the gold standard, what's going on here?
Second.
But I didn't. Thank you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate that. That wasn't required on that one, and I appreciate the thought.
Okay.
But I'll admit, I dropped the ball a little bit. Council to consider rejection of all proposals received for RFP twenty-three forty-one regarding consulting services for the development of a small business enterprises program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Uh, uh, Mr. Williams.
Oh, all I was gonna say, it went, it kinda surprised me that this study was this detailed and came up, it cost this much. I guess when we first started talking about it, I thought it was a way for us to help some of our local people just walk them through the process. And don't, if we're gonna spend even half this much money to do that, I think that, I wanna see the justification, how it's gonna lead to lower purchasing orders. I mean, we need to, we need to help our citizens out, but it needs to, to the rest of the citizens that, that aren't bidding, they, they need to get benefit out of it, too.
Yes, sir, which is why we deferred it. I mean, how to get rid of it.
Even at half of this amount, I think, I'm, I'm gonna have questions. So that's what I, that's the justification, I see. But I, no, I definitely agree, we, that, that, that's too much to spend on that program now.
Mr. Winkler.
I was gonna say, I agree, it's too much to spend, but I don't want us to drop the idea of...
Oh, agree.
Now, that, that is something that, when this was brought up, that was something that was promised to our citizens. That's not something the council's gonna walk away from.
You good? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-three forty-two regarding the construction for road improvements to South Carolina McConnell's Highway three twenty-two as part of the two thousand and three York County Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Program to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Eagle Construction Company of Newberry, for a total cost of nine million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you for the report, and it's very helpful.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-three forty-three regarding printing services for tax forms, envelopes, tax notices for use by the county auditor's office to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, J.M. Smith, Doing Business As Q S One Data Systems of Spartanburg, South Carolina, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider the abandonment of a portion of right-of-way along the Fort Mill Southern Bypass to the Fort Mill School District. Hello? Somebody?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider the approval of an authorization for the county manager and chairman to enter into a financial participation agreement with DOT for Pennies Two Project zero-three-zero-two-zero-zero-five, South Carolina ninety-seven Hickory Grove, De Smurner.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to say, this has been a long time coming, and please, let's make sure this stays on track, and get this, now, this, this road, if you've not driven it, is an extreme safety hazard. We need to make sure we keep this one on track. And also, I'd like to make sure, a previous discussion we had about an RFQ that should be in this week is taken care of, too. Thank you.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion, uh...
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, committee reports, Economic Development Committee meeting, April twenty-fifth. The Honorable Chairman, Robert Winkler.
As stated, we met on April twenty-seventh, eleven a.m. We discussed one thing, which is a, a ordinance for project development funding for economic development funds for the county. And we did suggest, or recommend that come out of committee before full council to be voted on next meeting.
At the next meeting. Finance and Operations Committee meeting, Chairman Michael Johnson, do you want somebody to defer to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to somebody who was there in a second, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna apologize. I had a closing that was supposed to start at four today, about four forty-five, we started printing out documents and signing. And so I missed that meeting, but I do want to point out, at our previous meeting, we had a discussion regarding the fire board, and we voted to defer. In that interim, I have received a phone call from the person who is being removed from that board, requesting the opportunity to speak to the Finance and Operations Committee. I, I granted that. We would have met with him today, but for the fact that we already had three other people speaking, and there just wasn't time to do that. We will take that up at the May sixteenth meeting, and I'm also gonna open up an opportunity to the fire board to send a representative, if they're so inclined, to, to, to talk to our group. We certainly don't want anyone to think that we are holding back this one. In fact, looking back at it, I think it was a communication problem that caused it to be deferred at the first time. But we will correct this, and we will, we will pass someone out of committee at our very next Finance Operations meeting. And now I'm gonna defer to whomever of Robert or Bruce wants to say what they did to do it.
Can I, can I follow up with one question on that?
Yeah, before we get the, that report, let Ms. Cox ask her question.
I just want to clarify, from county, our county manager, was the process followed, and was the, the, get direction from you, would the individual who was approved by the Fire Chiefs Association, was that done according to the procedure? And we're not, I'm just concerned about what is it that's going to be discussed at the next, I don't have a problem with people coming up and saying any piece of information they want to do, but I want to get clarification from, from you as to whether or not that process was followed, as I understood it was, although it's, it sounds like it's a controversial thing, that the process was followed.
I believe the process was followed. Did you see anything that, on the last one, I'm...
I mean, the chiefs took a vote, the vote was counted.
Yep.
Yeah, that, as Karen just said, that seat is a recommendation by the fire chiefs, and they're the ones that voted for that position. And far as I know, they did everything right. I wasn't actually at that meeting, but, I mean, and...
Well, I think, I saw Bruce, but were you pointing to Robert?
I was just getting permission to speak.
Okay, on, on the committee thing, or was...
Yeah, what we were talking about.
The fireman?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I'm just kinda curious, is, is to, to, not, not trying to pass the buck, but, because I'm on this other committee as well. But i- is this something, or some portion of this, should it go to the Public Safety Committee and be dealt with from that standpoint, rather than Finance and Operations?
No, because Finance Operations is the ones that elect people to the committees, so, put them on the committees, so...
Well, I think that's, that's a matter of interpretation of the statute, is how we do that. I think we're following policy. I'm not intending to usurp that role. I'm not intending to usurp that role, I just want to make sure that I understand that what's going to happen at the next FNO meeting, is that we're, you guys are going to approve the folks that the fire chiefs voted in, and that that, that's what we're doing, we're going to hear from the other individual, but we're going to follow our policy, and they approved this, this individual as a vote, that's, that was a proper procedure that was followed, that's all I want to make sure.
Well, I'm, okay, I think I heard.
Our committee here, testimony that says that the, that there was nothing abnormal about it, the committee will typically go along with a recommendation, can I, I have no idea, this man called me, said he'd like to be able to tell his version of the story, I told him I'm happy to let him, as I'd be happy to let anyone speak before Finance, so we're letting him talk.
Well, he called me, I guess he called.
And you sent him to me.
And I sent him to you.
I would, I would agree with Christie, that if anything other than confirming the fire board's recommendation is the recommendation from the Finance Committee, it probably ought to go to some. It probably ought to go to some, to some other committee, because we're getting deeper into rules and procedures of, of other boards.
All right.
All right.
And I'll, I'll, I was at, as Christie was, at that fire chief's meeting, and there
was no question brought up about the vote, as far as how it was done, until the vote came up the way it did, then the questions came up, so.
Man, I got to go put that note back up here. The FNO meeting.
Yeah. FNO meeting met this afternoon, we had three candidates for the tax board, natural gas, excuse me, natural gas, long day, York County Natural Gas Board. As council member Johnson said, he was not there, so there were two of us there, we interviewed the three candidates, we narrowed it down to two, but council member Henderson brought up a legal question that we're going to need some feedback from county attorney on, so we deferred until the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. Next item is council member new non-agenda comments, are there any comments before we move on? Uh, Ms. Cox.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I, I'm sure you guys have already gotten this, I'm going to pass you another copy out, I think they, I think that you got this. I requested some information that I intend to bring forward to the committee, that Citizens Ad Hoc Committee, on the Penny's Three project, one of the things that we requested was that staff come in and identify the projects by their district, the amount that was approved in the referendum, the, the amount that is, it looks like it's actually going to cost, and as you can see, there's going to be a shortfall, as we anticipated, of a significant amount, and these numbers are not, they're as good as we can get them without having a guarantee, but I want council to take note of, of one thing, there is only one project in this Penny's Three that is a District Five project, and there are very few that are District Four, and I certainly hope that this council will, will pay attention to this, and I, and at some point, depending upon what the Citizens Ad Hoc Committee asked for, and, and what's crazy about this to me, is that this project is last, when it should have been first, from the previous pennies. District Five has a ton of roadway on I-77, we do not, as, as the majority of District Five does not have a municipality that comes out and does H-tax applications, or that, that goes to and gets special recognition, such as RFATs and, and the municipalities, in terms of projects that they want to have put on a Penny's program, and all I'm asking is that council look at this, and that we be fair, and that you consider a resolution at some point coming up, that we, that we make sure that we do right by the public, and that we treat all of the districts fairly. Where you invest your money is where it will grow, and we should invest across the board, it shouldn't be in isolated areas, we have a lot of resources in District Five, access to, easy access to I-77, we want good projects in District Five, and I'm, and I'm asking for your help, as this, as this issue progresses.
Okay, any other comments from council members? Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
I just want to update everyone, over the weekend, we celebrated the 26th birthday of Earth Day, Earth Day birthday out at the museum.
Happy birthday, Earth.
Yeah, a real good turnout, a lot of educational booths were presented, had a really good time, a lot of kids were out. Also, we had the dedication of the Ann and Jack Roddy property with the conservation easement that we had before us several months ago, you may remember, it was 58 acres, along with basically a historic, a historical house that was built in 1812 by Major Jack Roach, who served in the war of, I think, 1811 or somewhat, but it was a, it's a good thing to see that, was it York County Forever, go out and acquire some of these different easements and properties to keep to our natural green space, and this property sits right on the cusp of, it butts up right up to Rock Hill, so it's, it's not some piece of property that's far out, that no one will ever get to ride by and see, it sits pretty much right on the, on the Rock Hill line, so it's, it's a real, real beautiful piece of property, a nice home, like I said, it was 58 acres, that's under this conservation easement, and I did have some conversation with a few of the board members for keeping York County, was it, no, York County Forever, and they did mention possibly looking at getting some type of funding back initiated in this next budget, and I think Chad already pointed out that we may not be able to do it on the, on the Fort Mill, but something of some sort, maybe starting to go back that way, if it's possible, so, it's just a little update from the weekend.
Thanks, sir.
Did it rain on Earth Day?
Later on, it did.
It did, they quit inviting me, because it rained every time I went.
Couldn't limit it by my yard, that's for sure. So do we have a motion on executive session?
Maybe we go into executive session to discuss a workers' compensation matter, a personnel matter involving finance director candidates, and a contractual matter involving the Riverview Volunteer Fire Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, we'll be back at 10 after 9. Session, there are no action items, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion from council to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, we are adjourned.